Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I call this December 12th, 2023 Board Work Session to Order. Dr. Miller, if you will, please take a roll call of the Board of Education.
Good morning, Board members.
Good morning.
Ms. Naomi Clark.
Present.
Ms. Jennifer Daisy.
Present.
Mr. Kara Ipa.
Present.
Ms. Lauren Kederman.
Present.
Ms. Kelly Muse.
Present.
Mr. Brett Manning.
Present.
Mr. Scott Murphy.
Present.
I declare your head of court.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. I'll now ask the four members if there are any amendments to the Board's agenda. If there are none, and seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to adopt the December 12th, 2023 Board Work Session Agenda.
So moved to second.
All in favor signify by raising your right hand. All right, thank you. And the motion, and the agenda is adopted. I now call on Board Member Brett Manning to review our safety procedures for this meeting.
In the event of a fire emergency, we will split the room in half. The right side of the room will exit out of the door to my left, and the left side of the room will exit out of the door to my right. Those moving to my right will go into the parking lot towards the bagel shop. Those moving to my left will go out to the digital sign near Glenn Burney Street and get as far away from the building until the fire department comes and clears the building.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Gatchell, if you will, offer an invocation for our meeting, please.
Board members, if you'll please pray with me. Almighty and compassionate God, we humbly gather our hearts in solemn prayer for the United States of America. Grant us a guiding light, the serenity that breeds peace, embracing our land from coast to coast. May justice, impartial and unwavering love flow through the veins of society, uniting us in the pursuit of equality for all. Bestow upon this Board of Education the wisdom to navigate complexities, fostering unity and understanding in their decisions. Lord, please illuminate their minds to serve with integrity for the betterment of our diverse, yet united, States of America. May the spirit of collaboration prevail over discord, and may the collective aspirations of liberty and justice be the compass that guides this great nation toward a future of harmony where all voices are heard and the flame of democracy continues to burn bright. God bless America and help us, America, to bless you. Amen.
Amen.
All right, Ms. Muse, if you will, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, unfortunately, as the agenda indicates, we're to recognize our parent representative, but this is both sad that she's not with us, but happy news that she is with her family as they have celebrated at birth in the family. So congratulations to her. We're just sad that she's not able to be with us. And of course, we have no student representatives this month because they're in exams. So look forward to having them back with us next month. I will recognize, though, both our Principal of the Year, Caitlin Watson, is with us. Good morning, Ms. Watson, and our Teacher of the Year, Nardi Rowton, both advisors for this work session. Thank you both for being here. And I don't see any elected officials, so with that, Dr. Miller, if you will, give us your update.
Good morning again, and Merry Christmas. Several updates for you today. First of all, for those that are not aware of the surprise announcement yesterday, Nardi Rowton was named the Southeast Regional Teacher of the Year.[314.01][314.01][applause] It's hard to pull off a surprise in an elementary school with little ones, but I think she thought they were going to hear a chorus sing until folks started busting in the room. We had with us, the current North Carolina Teacher of the Year was there to congratulate her, and certainly the previous Regional Teacher of the Year, who is also from Craven County. I look back, and I don't think, as far as I could see, that we've ever had two Regional Teachers of the Year back-to-back ever, so we made history yesterday for Craven County Schools. So she will go on to represent our region, Craven County Schools and Creekside, as she moves forward in the process for the North Carolina Teacher of the Year. I'm very excited for her. I had the opportunity to look at her portfolio, and the passion is just contagious when you read her portfolio. And I've also been there early in the morning when she does her math detective activities, when you can get little ones and parents to get them there at seven in the morning to do escape room-type activities, all related to standards, it's pretty exciting. So Creekside was very excited, and we're very excited for you, and wish you the best in the process. Also, we are home for the second year in a row, again setting history, for a regional finalist for Principal of the Year. She was a regional finalist, still waiting to hear the final word on that. We really feel good about that, and I think this speaks to the great things we have happening in the classrooms in Craven County, when we have both the Regional Principal of the Year and Regional Teacher of the Year back-to-back, that our folks, when sent out to talk about teaching and learning, stand apart from all the others. So that speaks to what's happening in our school district. Another exciting announcement, the Board did look at this last month. The vacancy rate was 13.4%, and it has decreased to 7.2%. That's very exciting, too. We're finding folks, and we're getting teachers in classrooms, and we're filling our classified positions. This last Saturday, we had a recruitment fair at New Bern High School. It's kind of hard now to recruit teachers because folks are going out to them early, our December grads, but we had a great day for our classified staff. Many folks came out and wanted to be a part of Craven County Schools, so that was a success last Saturday. Also, and I have copies for the Board, and I will be sharing this at break, Jerome Williams, Director of Facility Services for Craven County Schools, was featured in the magazine, the online journal, whatever you would call it, the Public School Works for the State of North Carolina. He was featured in the article about his vision and his work in Craven County Schools, so another spotlight for a Craven County School employee.[504.43][504.43][applause] And lastly, as the holidays are approaching, we're working again to remind you that our staff is very much appreciated, and we will be having our first annual holiday mingle specifically for beginning teachers on December 19th, games, prizes, and celebrations of the work they're doing in our classrooms with our students each and every day. So that's just some of the great things happening in Craven County Schools.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Any questions from anybody at this point? Okay.
Yes, I do.
Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, Dr. Miller.
Good morning.
Wonderful things you articulated. I'm glad we have a vacancy rate, but I don't want us load into a false sense of security because some of those vacancies are filled by long-term subs, right?
Well, and I'm thinking if they're subs, the position, Dr. Boone, is still posted, so it's still a vacancy. So it's not removed until a permanent person is in the position.
My point is that some of those who are filled by long-term subs don't necessarily have the credentials that other teachers might have.
And that is correct, as Craven County, a state and a national issue with finding certified teachers. And you're exactly right. Still doing residency license for those who went into other fields and drawing them into teaching, which is why it's so important for us to be good to our folks, provide them the resources they need, and professional development to ensure we have the very best in front of our students every day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. With that, we will move toward Policy and Governance. We have first reading of a number of policies, and there may be some that Board members would like to draw attention to or have questions about. Does anybody have anything in particular? Ms. Muse.
I think for our graduation requirement policy, instead of us just saying that we have read it, I think this policy needs to be discussed out loud and actually be read out loud for the public to hear what our graduation requirements are. I mean, we want to make sure everybody gets there and everybody graduates, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So I don't know if Dr. Boone wants to do that.[671.86][671.86][laughter] Or Ms. Lee do it, whoever wants to do it, but I think we need to, like...
I don't mind reading. I do want to remind you that the State of DPI, State of Carolina, is in the process of redefining the graduation requirements. The new general statute has said that states, I mean, PHSU could not ask or require more than 22 credits. That is back in technical corrections, apparently, and they're working through that, because we always have been able to give a 22 credit. The plan was approved from the superintendent, but we have additional requirements, like every, most every, the only one I know that does it, was AIP 22, and that's all. Most districts do have additional ones that you have to meet to graduate from your particular county in addition to the 22. But I'll be glad to go over this, but I do anticipate this for maybe...
Changing. And then the other one that I would like to do is the advertising in school, because, I mean, that way we have kind of uniformity district-wide, and then that way, everybody hears everything the same way at the same time.
I don't mind reading, or if you want to do that and go through it, either way, how you'd like.
Can we put it on the screen?
Sure, the graduation requirement is...
Yeah.
And if you would just clarify, our current graduation requirement is 26 credits, correct? So that's understandably why we want to point out.
Yes, ma'am.
We don't have a microphone back there.
I don't. I didn't know she was in capacity. But I can...
Yes, Mr. Ipa.
Well, Mrs. Lee is coming to the podium. If you remember, when we went to block scheduling many years ago, it gave us the flexibility to add the additional requirements. It's, it is work, obviously, but it is achievable by our students, and we felt like that was in their best interest. So that is one of the reasons that we did go to block scheduling a number of years ago. And I know that might be a question we want to continue to talk about, but...
Lots of conversation around the state about this with superintendent boards, because it has the potential to limit some of our career pathways for our students, that they won't be able to get the credentials, because when they meet 22...
They're done.
They're done. It can impact students who want to go into the military. If they graduate earlier, they won't be of the age to go into the military. Lots of concern around the state that maybe the unintended consequences of this legislation, which is why I think it's going back for some deeper discussion.
Absolutely. So the Craven County Board, this is Policy 3460, and this is first read. In the, in the text, anything in red or changes that were made at the recommendation of the State Board, the State Board Association, what is that?
North Carolina School Board Association.
North Carolina School Board Association, that's right, not the State Board. So this Craven County Board of Education recognizes the importance of setting rigorous graduation requirements to help ensure students are receiving an education that will prepare them to be career and college-ready and productive members of society. In order to graduate from high school, students must meet the following requirements. One, successful completion of all course unit requirements as described in Section A. Two, successful completion of cardi-pulmonary resuscitation instruction, CPR. And three, successful completion of all other requirements mandated by this board as provided in this policy. The principals shall ensure students and parents are aware of all graduation requirements. High school principals shall monitor the completion of graduation projects in compliance with the standards of quality. School counseling program staff shall assist students in selecting their high school courses to ensure that students are taking all of the required units and selecting electives consistent with post-graduation plans. For students who have transferred to the school system during high school or who, for other reasons, have completed coursework outside of the school system, the principal shall determine what coursework will be applied as credit towards graduation. The principal shall consider the requirements of the Interstate Compact on Educational Opportunity for Military Children, General Statute 115C-407.5, General Statute 115C-407.12, and the requirements of subsection C3 of this policy in determining the graduation requirements for students of military families. A, course unit required. Beginning with students entering ninth grade for the first time in the 2009-2010 school year, all students must fulfill the course unit graduations of the future-ready core course of study unless they are approved for the future-ready occupational course of study. Course unit requirements for future-ready core course of study and the future-ready occupational course of study differ depending on the year a student enters ninth grade for the first time, as set out in the tables below. So I'm just going to stop there and mention that every time there is a change, they tell us which cohort of students entering high school are affected. So right now, we have different graduation requirements for, I think, three of our four cohorts, depending on when they started, okay? And that will continue because we know that our upcoming sophomores will have a different one according to our new graduation requirements. In accordance with Policy 3101, dual enrollment in the State Board of Education requirements, students may earn high school credit for college course completed. In addition, students may earn credit for certain high school courses in the future-ready core course of study, completed while in middle school, as authorized by the State Board of Education. Students also have the opportunity to meet course unit requirements without completing the regular period of classroom instruction by demonstrating mastery of the course material in accordance with Policy 3420, Student Promotion and Accountability, and the State Board of Education requirements. All awards of high school course credit must be consistent with the State Board of Education requirements. Any inconsistency between board policy and the State Board graduation requirements will be resolved by following the State Board requirements. While the Board endeavors to keep its policy up to date with current State Board of Education graduation requirements, students should verify current requirements with their school counselors when planning course schedules or making other decisions based on graduation requirements. And if you look, the next section is a table, and this table shows the future-ready course of study, which is all general education students that are not in occupational course of study. And these were the required credits for students entering ninth grade for the first time in 2020-2021 school year. Each of the courses required, the state requirements, and then any local requirements. So for English, for example, they have to have four sequential Englishes, they have to have English 1, 2, 3, and 4. They can't take them out of order, and that is a state mandate, and it is a local requirement as well. Math, they have to have four maths, they have to have NC Math 1, 2, and 3, and a fourth math course aligned with the students' post-high school plans. So for that one, there are some CTE courses that will count as their fourth math. If they are not, if they're on a course of study or a planned career path, they don't need that fourth, high-level fourth math, they can take a CTE class that will provide that for them. And there is a, there is a chart by NCDPI that gives you the math options of what can replace math for, or can be used for the fourth math. There's three sciences that the state requires, and then our local requirement says a physical, we, so the physical science course, biology, and earth environmental science are state-regulated, and then are requirements, and so we additionally say for a physical science course, biology, earth environmental science, and one other science course. So that is one of the places where we have added a local requirement. Social studies, we have the same requirements as the state, four of them, including Founding Principles course, that can either be American History, Founding Principles, civics and economics, or Founding Principles of the United States of America and North Carolina, civics of literacy. Two, can be two American history courses, which shall either be American History 1 and 2, or American History 1 and 2, and another social studies course, or American History and another social studies course. Or three, they can take world history. PE, they have to take one PE, health and PE class, that's a state requirement, and we're, the same for there. The electives, they have to have six electives. Two electives must be a combination of CTE, art education, or world language. Four must be from one of the following: CTE, JROTC, arts education, or any other subject area or cross-disciplinary course. A four-course concentration is the recommendation from the state. We have added three additional, because our local requirement takes that to nine, and we have added that, we agree, two electives must be a combination of career and technical education or educational world language. Four can come from CTE, JROTC, art education, or any other subject area or cross-disciplinary course, and a four-course recommendation is still recommended. And then three additional electives after that. So if you see at the bottom, the state requirements is 22, the local requirements is 26. I will say that, like I said, there's going to be some changes, the world language is changing, there's going to be, excuse me, there's going to be a computer class that's going to be mandated, so those all are going to be changing a little bit as we go along. So then if we go to, there's nine pages of this, so do you want me to read every word of this?
Just the gist.
Highlight it, okay?[1397.11][1397.11][laughter] She said, "Read it all out."
Just the gist of it.
But that is the gist.
Right, and I have, I have one question, since, I know you mentioned Onslow was at 22 credits.
That's all they have ever required.
Okay, and so I guess one of my questions is, how many counties are similarly situated to us? Everybody, most everybody requires 26 credits as opposed to 22.
Give students opportunities to, you know, dive into their career.
Right, okay.
And credentials, really important.
Onslow is the only one that I'm aware of that doesn't have some other requirements. They're not all up to 26, 24, 25. Some of them have a mandatory, like, work internship experience they have to do, so there's some, there's other things that other districts require beyond 22, but it's kind of all over the place. And I guess maybe that's one of the reasons the state has been looking at this. I'm not really sure, so...
Okay, and for the benefit...
But there is benefit to requiring more at the local level, because it...
Absolutely.
It creates exposure to different opportunities, and if kids are interested in CTE courses or the arts or other things like that, it goes towards their graduation rate, but they get that support, you know what I mean? So I think it's a great thing that Craven County requires more credits than the bare minimum.
Anytime we have the opportunity to expose our students, to give them opportunities, I mean, they are, they are in an exposure area where they're trying to figure out what their path is. It's very hard for a 17-year-old to know exactly what they're going to do for the rest of their life. So giving them those options to try out different things in the CTE department, the arts, really...
Well, it's also a benefit because parents don't waste money on college that first year or two, for them to decide how this isn't for me.
This is going to be a real challenge for students who take dual enrollment courses. It's going to impact the local community colleges, and they're not really excited about the impact, because with the 22, they're pretty much with us to get those credits and move on, where now we have students that spend much of their day free to parents at the community. So there's a lot of concern about this new policy. You should be in this library, get some feedback, force some further discussion.
For sure. If we want to just kind of go through the second, I'm not going to read the second table, but that is for students that enter ninth grade in 2021, and the only, I think the only change with that one is in the footnotes at the bottom. And then we have one for students that enter ninth grade 2021 and thereafter, so it's telling you not just those kids, it's any kids beyond that. And then the three is for kids who take the occupational course of study, entering ninth grade, and prior to 2021, and this is only available to certain students with disabilities who have an IEP. Four is a future-ready occupational course of study for students entering ninth grade, only available to students with disabilities if they enroll first time 2021. And then it goes back, and it picks up that this is for 2021 and thereafter, so it does this same process with the future-ready course of study, as well as the future-ready occupational course of study. And then if you get to B on page 79, it says, seven of nine, it says, "High school students must take all end-of-course exams or tests. All CTE, technical education, state assessments required by the State Board of Education pursuant to Policy 3410, testing and assessment policies." There is a special circumstances clause here that says, "The Board adopts the following policy with regard to graduation." And then I think on the back of, or page eight of the nine pages, is where you get into some of the changes. In number three, children of military families. In order to facilitate the on-time graduation of children in military families, as defined in Policy 4050, children of military families, the local, the Board adopts the following policy provisions, which includes being able to waiver requirements for students that have similar coursework from another state or another school system. Testing requirements for graduation, if they have taken a local testing in another county or another state, the superintendent can say that their, say they took their end of the course test in March, and they come to us in April, if they pass and they took it, the superintendent can say that will take the place of the end-of-course that we would normally give for that course at the end of the year, and then transfers during the senior year. So being a military-friendly school system, that's where that has come into. And that, and other than legal references, that is, that is the only changes. I think that the other things that we know are paramount to the graduation policy, or can be found in our attendance policy and our grading policy for how students' work is assessed and evaluated.
I have a question. What can you tell us about the computer classes that you said are going to be mandated?
There's a computer science class that is going to be mandated in eighth grade, in middle school, they're going to have to take it in middle school.
That's great.
I hope, am I, it's changing. And, I, I hope, am I, I'm, it's, it's changing, it was going to be in high school, then they said it was going to be in middle school.
And I know this isn't concrete, I just, I'm interested in what is evolving, because I think this is-
Do you want to add something to that?
I can. Actually, at this point, we, the incoming class will be requirement to offer exploring computer science class in middle school.
Right.
But then there will be high school graduation requirements for students to take a class that will meet that computer science requirement.
Correct.
There are several that meet that requirement, there's like 80 courses that were listed, some of which we already offer. And to show, Ms. Lee was correct in that, they have identified six courses at this point that are high school courses that can be offered in middle school, somewhat like the math one, and it will serve as a graduation requirement for that student.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Ms. Muse?
Right, so when you asked a question, it creates another question. So, Ms. Tolson, will these be, are these going to be core curriculum, considered core curriculum classes, or they going to be CTE classes?
Interesting question. The state has said they have not yet determined if it's going to follow under math, science, or CTE, but CTE seems to be at this point very involved in the discussion, Mr. Michaels and Robert Van Dyke, who are presenting to the state board. We don't know, and we may not know until the spring, and then wants to start offering the fall.
Which creates another question, right?
Yeah.
Which-
Many questions.
Which creates another question. Budget.
Absolutely.
And funding, because that means months of employment, that means you're going to have to set up labs, computer labs.
That was my next question, are we equipped?
So, I know what your budgets are, I mean, we all know what your budgets are, you don't have the funding.
Well, we already have some labs that will meet that requirement, and we are already looking at how many labs we may need to add for the next school year, so we've already begun planning, although it's not in our lab yet, we have already begun discussing, discussions and planning for that.
Okay. Hopefully, the state will nail this down sooner rather than later, because that's really called, every time we think we know it's going to be, and we start preparing our people, then they sent, well, hold off, this change, it's going to change again. It's changed like three or four times just over the last three months, so, makes it very difficult for budgeting and, in, any kind of long-range planning.
Yeah, but if you have to take a look, I mean, I hate to say this word, I mean, everybody's still blaming everything on COVID for shipping delays, which was three years ago, so if we have an influx statewide of purchases that need to be made for computers, there could be another delay, you see, you know what I'm saying? So, it, once again, we're like dogs chasing our tail.
We're thinking about our current courses will probably sneak that guy in, and I think the intent of the law was to expose students to the different type of technologies and prediction of the future of where technology will take us. Interestingly enough, at the superintendent's conference, they talked about artificial intelligence and how far we, we've come with that, and how if we think as adult students aren't already getting those chat bots or all the things, I mean, I can keep up with it, you know, when I say something, they go, "Well, that's old, Dr. Miller, that's old news, that was a month ago." So, preparing our students for an ever-changing world, part of that process is just that, that if, if you can't decide on one thing, because things are moving at such a fast pace, that we need to be prepared just for changes itself.
So, we will keep you updated on this policy as it evolves. I, I don't think we should make any significant changes beyond this until we get a little more-
Right.
-input from where it's going.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. So I, I think for the benefit of the public, you've not gotten in the weeds to look at what we're actually reviewing on the agenda, the proposed changes are very limited in scope, they relate only to changes necessary because of statutory changes to implement the Interstate Compact on Educational Opportunity for Military Children, which obviously we want to do and we need to move forward with, and we're just foreshadowing our concerns about other changes to graduation requirements, and I think, I would also point out that, and what members of the public need to understand is that, my understanding, and board members can, can chime in, is that the General Assembly is looking to do technical corrections in the spring, so that would get back to not just our finance issues, but also to these graduation requirements, so if you're seeing your legislators, these are issues for us to bring to their attention as we speak with them, and I would encourage members of the public to do that. I think, you know, based on sort of our discussions over the last year or so about various graduation requirements, I think we like the way that we do things here in Craven County, and I think if we want to continue to do them that way, we need to make our voices heard on that point.
Absolutely.
So, all right, what other questions do board members have on, on policies here? Ms. Clark?
Can we, can we just go in order, and then if we have questions?
Yes, ma'am.
I've, I've got three policy concerns. The first one, if you would pull up immunization and health requirements for school admission, 4110, just for the public's clarification, is my understanding that the, the changes being made are minimal, and just for statutory purposes only?
That is correct, there are no major changes in the policy, it is just the, I, I do think that this will be impacted a little bit when the, with the Parents Bill of Rights, that we may have to put some language in there, saying, giving a little more detail about the process, but at this point, it's just a, it's just statutory changes.
Thank you. And then, sorry, I may have to-
No, you go, well, let me just make sure there are no other questions on this particular policy before we move on, any, any other comments? I know, my understanding from the School Boards Association was the, the language that is stricken from subsection B, right there, that, that's because that program no longer exists, I believe, the Governor's Commission on Early Childhood Vision Care.
Yes, that's correct.
So, and the other conforming changes are to subsection E, again, those relate to the Interstate Compact on military children, which obviously we need to, to make. You know, the only thing that I would say about this is that I, I, I like the fact that we make our policy very clear on what's required and, and what exemptions are permitted, and obviously-
Nurse Mack and her team do a great job of monitoring this for us.
Right, and I think we've had some issues, not, not in our system, but at, at the community college level on this issue, that we've heard about from nursing students, so...
Yes, we have, they're actually forcing vaccines in, on students in the health and medical field, is my understanding, they won't let them do their internships at the hospital unless they receive vaccines.
Okay, any other comments on, or questions about this, this one? All right, if, if not, then we'll, we'll move on, what other policies might-
The next one I have was policy 4150, school assignment and reassignment, just for some clarification of-
Yes, I think that makes sense, Ms. Clark, we, we've had some questions about this.
That's been a hot button.
It has, it has, I think there was a little bit of misunderstanding when we decided not to move forward with redistricting about any changes to this, and really, there are no substantive changes, so, Ms. Lee, if you'll speak to this change.
And I, and I do think it's, yes, I just need to pull it up, so I can get what you see. The file, this, this has been reviewed by the Superintendent's Cabinet, the only change in this policy is to remove the language of hardship from the Craven County School Policy 4150, school assignment. It should be further recommended that the Craven County School Board amend policy 4150 to designate specific reassignment requests based on the current, excuse me, current guidelines listed in the policy. So, the, the guidelines for the, for requesting and being approved for an assignment would be if it's in the best interest of the child, if, if it affects, if it can be done within the orderly and efficient administration of our schools, if the proper administration of the school to which the assignment is requested, and the health, instruction, health and safety of students there, of the pupils there enrolled. Additionally, there's a legal reference that's been updated. If you look at the policy itself, you can see that the only statement that was removed was on the reassignment request form, parents or guardians wanting to explain their reason for requesting a reassignment, period. It took away, including any hardship posed by having their child attend their regularly assigned school. So, we're just requesting that if parents need, for whatever reason, to request reassignment, that they explain their reason in full, and how it affects and impacts their family, and then the process will be followed.
Ms. Clark?
So, so three questions. One, who will make the initial determination as to whether or not the assignments granted?
That, that goes to Dr. Greg Monroe, the Director of Student Services, he will, he will get the application for reassignment request, and he will compare it to policy to see if it is in line. If it is in line, then he'll move it forward in the process.
Then I, I just have one more, and I'm sure I'll go, you will ring when, if necessary. Well, we have best interest, I think that term is, is nebulous, I think it's subjective, I think it opens up room for abuse, and it sort of puts us back where we were, and I guess when we go into closed session, Mr. Gatchel, perhaps you would give us legal advice as to whether or not best interest needs to be further delineated?
So, this is an area that the General Assembly has told you.
Let's hold it until it turns green.
Just hold it. So, this is an area in which the General Assembly has told you what you shall do.
So, all of the discussion is, you're free to have, but you don't have any discretion with regard to what they told you and how this process will work. And it-
Ms. Muse?
But for clarification, when we're talking about this, we're talking about kids that live in Craven County that's supposed to go to Creekside, and they want to go to Trent Park, or whatever. We're not talking about someone who lives in Pitt County and wants their child to come to Craven County, which, which has happened, and, and there is a difference in between the two.
Yes, they-
And there has been some confusion, I think, with the public pertaining to those differences, so an outside-county student coming in compared to kids just moving around in the district.
So, we, we have to, we have a different process for that. Students that come from another county have to be released by their county, they have to go to their county and do paperwork and has to be released from their county. They come to our county and they ask for admittance into our county, there is a tuition cost, and I don't know what it has gone up to, it was in the 1,400 range for a while, do you know what it is, Ms. Altman? We're talking about the tuition cost for outside of our district.
It's around $2,000.
It's up to $2,000-ish. Okay, and so, we, you're, you're, the board did put a clause in that in the first 20 days, if students want to enroll in our district from outside of our county, we can waive that, because if they come within 20 days, their ADM or average daily membership money comes with them to help us support them academically, but after 20 days, no money comes with them, and then the tuition would have to be paid. So that is a different, that is a different process.
Right, but I wanted that clarified, because there's been quite a bit of talk publicly about kids coming from outside of the county.
And, and I will, I will say-
One of the things that we have to watch is that if they want to bring their kid
from, from another county and tell us where they want them to go, that doesn't always work, because if we, if you come to us from outside of our county, then you're driving them, you're bringing them anyway, and we have to play, we, we would need to place them where we have space, room, and the appropriate programming. If they ha, if it works out that the school that you would like, and we have those, the availability, that's great, but it doesn't always work that way. I had a case last year that didn't work that way, we had to offer different schools than what they had particularly wanted.
Dr. Miller?
And if I can speak to this, I think one of the reasons that we are looking at this is because the board has mentioned we have several schools over capacity, and some of those are due to reassignments of students living in the district going to that school, and they're kind of tightening that up, and not having one school overpopulated, and other schools with vacant classrooms, not being, using the taxpayer money in the wisest manner. So in looking at this, Ms. Parkrod, it's a great point, the word hardship is also a term that, you know, what, one person gets hardship, so we tried to tighten up a little bit to, so that we won't say this person is a hardship, because my child is, you know, I work in Uber, well, anyone out west is probably driving somewhere, but if we let everyone come, then we have schools that have vacant classrooms, Mr. Murphy can speak to this, and then other schools 137% in capacity. So in thinking about that, and staffing, size of our classrooms, older buildings have smaller classrooms, all of that will be considered, and certainly direction from the board about tightening up that process for the coming year. There are deadlines, if folks miss that deadline, they are automatically denied because they didn't meet the deadline.
That's right, and then-
Then they can appeal when it comes to me, and I make my decision, and if they want to appeal again, then it goes to a panel of the board.
And, and just for the sake of clarification, would you clarify the deadline? As I'm reading the policy, it says, "You have to complete a reassignment request form between the days of March 1st and March 31st."
That is correct.
Right, so-
It becomes available on March 1, and on the 31st is the last day, after that is automatically is a denial. The only, the only exemptions to that is if someone moves into our district after the 31st, and they, they, we do, we will consider a reassignment request at that time, but if they were in the county during that month, they have to do it, and, and that is early, but it really is needed so we can plan and project allotment and teachers and staffing for the next school year.
Right, just for the sake of further clarification, the only other thing I'd, I'd like to clarify is, as we've discussed previously, full-time contract employees, as a benefit, traditionally have been able to-
Request reassignment.
Request reassignment for their children.
And they still have to fill out forms? They do.
Correct.
There he is, I was looking all over here.
But that, that benefit, that benefit, if I'm correct, only in worst to full-time contract employees, correct?
Not necessarily contract, because we're classified folks, but full-time employees.
Okay, okay.
Full-time employees.
So the easiest way to sum it up is full-time employees that receive benefits?
Yeah, well, yes, those people full-time, exactly.
Right, so-
That is correct.
Because folks contract with other agencies and work in our schools, that does not necessarily, they, they have to be our employees, and that is one of the, the benefits that we use to attract folks, that if you're a nurse for Craven County Schools and you're at Graham Barden, and you have a kindergarten, or that your child can definitely be there, so that will be a purpose of that.
Okay, thank you, any other questions? Mr. Ipa?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So that means that you don't get to pick your school, for instance, you teach at Graham Barden, but you want your child to go to Creekside.
Well, you could, because if your child's in middle school and you're at Graham Barden, and you live out west, you might not want your child to go to a western middle school, you might want them to be in Havelock, so we have to let them select a school that they would prefer, many town-distance school either in which they work or close proximity, but we have had occasions where folks have made requests for other reasons, and we've honored that if they're an employee full-time.
There's also that stipulation, we're, in some of those requests-
There's also that stipulation, we're, in some of those requests for employees, we do have to deny because they're in great, they're requesting for a reassignment in grade levels that have class-size restrictions, and they are above the district average. So, generally, the process is also written in the policy with feedback from the principal. So, generally, those requests come, anything that comes after the thirty-first and, and during that, that window, principal feedback is also included. So, there may be some that have had attendance or other issues that the, that the principal think they need to go back to their base school. And then there may have been some employees that we want to hire, but kindergarten can only take but sixteen and/or a cap of nineteen, and, and some of our elementaries have been over those caps and above the districts.
Okay. Thank you for that. Any other questions, board members, on that?
I'm ready to move on to the next one.
Yes, ma'am. What's the next one?
I think after Mrs. Muse advertising, I want to talk about substitute teachers. I think you would also talk about advertising.
Okay, let's stop at advertising then. Fifty-two forty.
I appreciate you doing this, but I'm sorry.
Oh, it's okay, that's my job. So, advertising in schools, do you want to do this one?
And she's coming forward. I would ask the board to pass this because I know there have been concerns with some of our advertising. So, the board, my recommendation would be that we send a letter to those who are participating in the advertising and they clear the board policy regarding the types of advertising that can be developed on our school property.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And so, with this policy- with this policy, advertising in school, fifty-two forty, these were required and recommended changes by the School Board Association as well. So, do you want me to read the policy, or can you just kind of hit the highlights? Yeah. So, as it says in Section A, "The policy is intended to govern requests to advertise products, services, programs, or activities on school property, at school events, or through school publications and other media by individuals, nonprofit organizations, as well as for-profit organizations and businesses." It also highlights what is prohibited in regards to advertising, and I think this is probably the one that we really need to focus on.
There you go.
Yeah. So, "The Board of Education prohibits advertising that is vulgar, indecent, or obscene, contains libelous statements, personal attacks, or abuse of language such as language defaming a person's character, race, religion, ethnic origin, sex," which was one of the changes that was brought by the School Board Association, "including pregnancy, childbirth, sexual orientation, and gender identity, family status or disability, causes or clearly threatens to cause a material or substantial disruption of a school activity, encourages the commission of lawful, unlawful acts or the violation of lawful school rules or regulations," and that's probably the one that needs to have an asterisk by it, "is inappropriate considering the age of the students in the school," also another one that needs to be highlighted, "includes information that is inaccurate, misleading, or false, or is for any product or service not prohibited to minors by law." Another highlighted, asterisk as well. So, that would be probably the things that we would want to take into consideration from the board's perspective in regards to the advertising.
And my recommendation, Madam Chair, would be please to afford a policy to anyone that uses our facilities, our grounds, our buildings that we make clear and written when we, and we provide it to them so they're aware of things that are a violation of our policy to advertise while they're on our campus.
And then also, under, let me see what letter this is, "The Regulations in Regards to Governing Advertising in the Schools." If you will look at number two, which was number four, "That school officials may permit boards' displays or banners that acknowledge donations to or sponsors of school or the school system." So, we see that on a regular basis. "But school officials shall prohibit advertising through the school system employee and student email system." So, we used to have quite frequently the everybody emails. So, that has really been terminated through the help of technology to not be able to send those. The school system website, which, so we're not allowed to advertise other businesses on our district site, or the school sites. I think sometimes people think that we can put their logos on. We cannot do that. Or teacher mailboxes. So, no paper flyers as well. And we do offer organizations that do have a discount for our school system employees. So, we do have the Educator Express that is updated and sent out through the, in the know so that staff know which organizations that they might want to visit that support them in Craven County Schools. So, that is helpful to know which businesses provide those services for our educators.
Great. Thank you.
Yes.
Any questions or comments? But obviously, this policy would include advertising things like vape shops or underage drinking or ammunition.
Weapons.
Weapons, yes. Yes. All right. Thank you. Any other questions for me? I don't think so.
Okay.
Seventy-four thirty.
Seventy-four thirty, okay. So, this is substitute teachers. I believe this is just legal reference updates, but Dr. Boone's got this one.
Everybody gets a turn today.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Boone.
Yes, ma'am. Good morning.
Good morning.
So, the updates for the substitute are legal reference. Does anybody else have any other question?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. I'm mindful, I'm mindful, Mr. Gatchel, that there is no right to be a substitute teacher. But as, as I look at the second paragraph where it says, "If necessary, the superintendent may add a substitute teacher to the approval list, dah 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 dah, subject to board approval at his next regular meeting." What is interesting to me is that, and there needs to be some clarification, and I think we need to perhaps change this particular policy, is that attached to the HR letter sent by HR, it talks about the principal having the right to ban a substitute without getting board approval. So, there seems, there seems to be some confusion there. Because if, if we have to approve them adding, adding a sub, I would think the board would likewise want to be involved in a removal of a sub, recognizing that their, the, the letter in that sub, the wording in that sub list is a little bit confusing. It gives the principal a great deal of discretion, and that's just something the board needs to look at.
So, you're speaking of the substitute removal letter from a campus by principal request?
Yes, ma'am. Where specifically the principal gets to ban some, a principal on their own motion.
Yes, ma'am. So, if, if, if I may explain to everyone, our, our principals do have the discretion, and it is in the substitute paperwork and in the language that the principal has the discretion to request that they be removed for any reason. However, we do have a form that the principals or administrators must complete. And in our paperwork, it says that if someone has been requested to be removed three times, then they are removed from the substitute list.
From very different schools.
Yes.
They said, "We don't want this person back."
Right.
They're removed from the master list.
Yes.
But you missed, you missed a point, or I'm not making myself clear. My concern is that principals, of getting board approval through their own discretion, is allowed to ban, ban a sub.
To remove a sub from their campus? Yes, ma'am.
From that school.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm just saying that no one is, is above a rules, leaves a room for subjectivity, could be arbitrary and capricious. And again, this is HR policy, not the board's policy.
So, is it your, and I want to make sure that I'm listening to what you're saying because a remover from a school does not always mean a remover from the master sub list.
But it means removal from that school.
Yes, ma'am.
No, we're in the same way, but, and again, I'm just going to vote. I'm, I'm bringing it to the board to make sure you're aware that each air has a policy, but yet we have this particular policy saying that we must approve it. I just think there needs to be some clarification.
And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, they do fill out a form like, there was a reason there-
Yes, yes.
That incident occurred where they would prefer that sub.
Yes, they have to document the concern and sending it back to HR. And we, and we, in return, send the letter to the individual letting them know that a request has been made and that they have been removed from the school site. But that doesn't mean removal off the list. So, is your request that they come to the board to be removed from the master list, period?
I'm not saying the master list. I'm saying anytime the principal can remove me from school, from subbing, and not necessarily have to give me a reason as a sub, something's wrong. If we talk about basic, basic fundamental fairness, if we talk about decency, if we talk about trying to recruit subs, and we know there's already a dearth-
Yes, ma'am.
-of vacancy amongst our school, I'm just saying we can, we can do better.
So, you're-
They are notified, though.
Yes, they are notified. But I think-
Some are, some are.
Ms. Clark is saying she wants it, she wants it to come to the board if they're removed. Is, is that your request, Ms. Clark?
No, I'm not saying they should come to the board.
Right.
I'm saying you should bring it to the board.
Yes, that's, 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 that's what I thought you were saying.
In closed session. Yes. I think that we can, we can deal with that specifically with regard to a particular situation. So, point well taken, Ms. Clark. I think we'll discuss that further. Anything else from the, from the rest of the board on this particular policy? And is there any other policy about which any, anybody has any questions? Of course, these are first read. So, we will have another look at them next month. Anything else?
Uh-uh.
All right. Is it the will of the board to proceed to the second group, second read? All right, all of these policies in this section will be on the consent agenda to be approved later on in this meeting. So, if anybody has any specific questions, I'd ask you to raise those now. If not, I'll ask Dr. Boone to come up.
I'm still here.
She's still here. She just walked away and came back. All right, Dr. Boone. Have the floor.
Prior to the meeting, I passed out the Human Resources Report. As every month, when I come to the board, I'm requesting the approval of Human Resources Division Report Number Six for the month of December.
Yes, Dr. Miller?
Madam Chair, ma'am, I recommend that you take action now and that we do this after closed session.
Yes, ma'am. Agreed. Everybody good with that? All right. And if you would proceed with your master teacher program.
Okay. Some great news from the world of HR. Dr. Miller did deliver some good news for us earlier. I know the board has been waiting for this presentation. We, Heather and I joked about it, that it's been on the agenda for four months, and then we've had to keep moving it because we did not have the state data to give you all. We wanted to make sure that we were giving accurate data. So, the master teacher initiative update. Last year, prior to the beginning of the year, I talked about, I dealt with Dr. Miller, who had already had an idea about ways that we could support low-performing schools. We talked about it in Cabinet, talked with Mr. Griffin about some funding, and were able to implement what we call the master teacher initiative. Next slide, please. The master teacher initiative, as I just said, was a way for us to kind of support low-performing schools in our areas. And what we wanted to do was to attract highly-qualified teachers based on experience, based on licensure, and based off of test scores, which is what we usually use to measure, and the state usually measures to determine highly-qualified, to all of our elementary low-performing schools and our middle schools. In elementary, we wanted to focus one teacher on K-2, and then one teacher in the areas of 3-5. In middle school, we specifically asked for one in ELA and one in the area of math. At the time, we ended up having twelve teacher assignments that we wanted to fill, but we did not end up filling all of them. Each low-performing school had to post an interview for the master teacher position. So, at one point, you may see, you would have seen a third-grade teacher for JT Barber, but then you may have also seen a master teacher because the master teacher could have gone in grades K through two or in grades three through five. Okay? So, in the interview process, the master teacher had to not only apply an interview, but they had to bring data. They had to either bring M-class data if they were K-2 to prove that they were highly effective, or they had to bring EVOs data if they were in grades three through five to show that they have been highly effective in the areas of achieving growth or demonstrating exceeding growth in those areas. Okay? Next slide, please. So, as we began this journey and trying to attract master teachers to low-performing schools, we had to look at measures of success. How would we determine whether or not these master teachers, who could have been based at their own school or who could have transferred schools? How are we going to determine that? Well, the first thing that we, of course, were going to look for was above, above-average class growth or exceeding growth on North Carolina, and of course, assessments or using M-class data for those that had K-2. Okay? The terms of employment would be, they would, they would work their regular ten months of, of employment. They would receive a $5,000 sign-on bonus, which was split into two. So, they received $2,500 in the beginning and $2,500 in the spring. They received that designation of master teacher, and they, that we would use the state measures for growth, which is to grow in green or to exceed in blue to determine whether or not they would get a performance bonus. Performance bonuses, as he just walked in the door, were agreed to be paid by Mr. Jason Griffin using some of our ESAR funds to show, to demonstrate mastery in our school. As mentioned before, we had twelve initial assignments. If you can go to the next slide, please. But we only ended up hiring eight master teachers. We advertised in the county and outside of the county. We ended up with four at the elementary level at JT Barber, Oaks Road, and Vanceboro Farm Life, and then we ended up with another four at Havelock Middle, HJ, and West Craven Middle. Note from you, for you, is that four teachers moved from their individual school sites they were originally assigned to become master teachers at other school sites. And then we had four teachers who were already at their school sites who earned the designation of master teacher. So, a half and half. Four stayed, and then four left their original areas. Next slide, please. Okay? And, oh, Lord, this didn't come up like I thought it would be. The initial results, and, and you, and I'll explain this in a minute because it doesn't add up to a hundred. But out of our twelve initial assignments and eight master teachers that were actually hired, we had 12.5%, which is one person, who did not meet growth or exceed growth. 62.5% of them met growth, which is in the green, and 25% of them exceeded growth. So, out of 100%, our district was 87.5% successful. Seven out of the eight master teachers either met or exceeded growth for our low-performing schools. And I think that is an awesome.
It is.
While this was a pilot last year, and of course, we have to continue. If we decide to keep this initiative, if, if there's funding, we would love to do that if we were able to find that. If we needed to make tweaks, that's, that's fine as well. But we see initially that we have- But we see initially that we have teachers who are willing to go to low performing schools, who are successful at low performing schools. And then we also see that we have teachers who can stay at their low performing schools and help lead and be successful as well. So seven out of eight, I think those are really good numbers. I'm very happy with this, excited to give it to the board. And if there's a way that we could do it again, we would love to, understanding that it's always about the thinking.
Ms. Muse. We spend a lot of money on a lot of stuff at times that doesn't necessarily bear these kind of results. So the proof, right, everything's data-driven or should be. The proof is in this data. So, I think, sorry, Ms. Altman. I think, I think we need to look at finding a way to keep this and to grow it. And I'm, I'm not saying that these kind of bonuses can stick and it may not be this much. But we know the tremendous amount of work that these teachers had to put in above and beyond their normal classroom day to get these kind of results. And the planning and the out-of-the-box thinking that it required of them to achieve these results. So, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to find a way.
That would be great. Mr. Ipaq.
So the question is, um, the funding. Um, the ESER funds have been used in the past to support this, and we're at the end of the ESER funds.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
So now we must find the local money or fund balance or some other way to fund this concept and continue it.
And the amount of funds, if available, uh, would depend on how many schools would be designated as low performing because those numbers won't sway, um, based off of the data that comes back from DPI. So, and then we may not be able to hire them. As you can see, we initially had 12 slots and only filled eight. So the, it would go up and down, but would be nice if, if possible.
See, are we talking to?
Anybody else, Ms. Clark?
Yeah, yeah.
Just outstanding.
It took everyone, thank you, ma'am.
All right. Well, thank you very much for that. I think that's great data for us to see. I appreciate that. Obviously, we've got to prioritize as we, as we drive toward the ESER cliff. All right. Well, with that, let's, um, let's take a break, 10-minute break. Okay. We'll give, we're waiting for Mr. Ipaq and Ms. Kit singer just one moment, but we're gonna resume. Ms. Tolston, if you'll make your way up, we'll wait just a moment. I yelled out the 50-second warning, but I don't know who heard me. All right. Where Mr. Ipaq is, all right. You, you go right ahead, yes, thank you.
Good morning, board.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for having me this morning. I'm here this morning to request permission to apply for a grant through the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. It is the CT Modernization Grant. Um, the plan is to use the funding in the amount of a little over $47,000 to implement a Paxton Patterson College and Career Readiness Lab at Havelock Middle School in the fall of 2024.
Who has, who has questions?
I only have one.
All right.
So, will this be enough to cover, it won't be enough to cover the whole lab? Will it, you're still going, I mean, you know what I mean?
It will, to get us started. I believe it's 10 modules, which is sufficient number to get started. And then as the years go, we'll add a module here and there, student interest changes whatsoever. But it, it will fund pretty much the entire lab.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure of.
Will you have an, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Ms. Clark.
Will you have an actual teacher there or will the students be working off of a computer? I, I see you say online.
Well, there is a teacher in the classroom that will work like a facilitator, but students will work in groups to go through the modules together. And then the teacher will rotate through the room to facilitate learning and answer questions for students.
Well, let me just tell you one criticism that I heard, uh, from high school students who are, uh, doing career, uh, courses online of the similar program. They feel they need, uh, hands-on. Um, I'm just spreading the word. They, they said, it's just sitting in front of the computer isn't very helpful.
Okay. Um, we don't have a Paxton Patterson College Career Ready Lab in the high school, but I would be interested to learn more from you on what course that might be specifically, so we could look at that.
You might not have particularly this program, but any career program that's online, uh, they thought it could be more effective with their being, uh, hands-on teaching as opposed to them sitting in front of the computer. And, and, but this is wonderful. This is, this is wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Watson, did I?
Yeah, I can just speak to, um, your question. I have this lab at Greber. We were, we got it this year, um, and I do walk through this lab room all of the time. The teacher who is teaching it, um, was formerly, um, doing Microsoft Word and Processing. She's still doing the keyboarding class for six grade, but now for seventh grade, she's doing the Paxton Patterson lab. Um, every single time I walk in there, they're cooking, they're painting shelves. They are figuring out, like, they got maps of forest fires, where, where, like, where to plant trees. Um, they are learning how to, um, they've got, like, simulations of crime scenes and looking at trajectories of, you know, bullets and, I mean, all kinds of things. I mean, it's so fun, they love it. Every time I go in there, it's super hands-on. Just the other day, they had, um, students with gloves. They had to put ketchup all over their hands. Um, it was a health science module. They had to figure out how to get the gloves off without touching the germs. I mean, so much of it is hands-on. So even though some of it is online, learning through modules, the teacher is there facilitating. She's super hands-on, walking around with the kids. And the activities they're doing are very hands-on. They, they love it. Um, they go back to class, talk about it, and students have been asking their counselor how they get signed up for this class. So it's on really well and a great addition to our school. So I'm excited for Havelock Middle for students to have that opportunity as well.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Clark, follow up.
Thank you. No, you're preaching to the choir. I think it's a wonderful, uh, program, especially when I first heard that Grover Singh was getting it. But what I also heard you said, it makes a big difference, hands-on and teacher involvement or engagement. So, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, so what's the name of the class or is there multiple different classes that go into this lab?
It's Exploring Careers and Employment. It's the same code that we use at the elders.
Okay, okay. And you just do all of those different things?
So we've been, um, both in things we have, but, um, modules, we want to ask for, we have a fair result.
Okay.
What career interests kind of are top for our school. Um, and, like, I know that Mary, um, science was very high for us. Um, health sciences was very high for us. Um, and so what we pick are the ones that we solve the most interest with for our students. And so those are the ones, I think we have 10 modules in our classroom. The first one is kind of a more generic, exploring careers where students get the hang of how to function with the module. The teacher walks around, they all do that one together, and they're paired with a part. paired with a partner, and they get to work through different modules. They won't work through all of them within one semester. There's just so many. And so they kind of got to rank which ones they wanted to make sure they got to within the semester, and they spend like four weeks in one station, and then they'll move around the room after they're done with that.
Okay. And so, thank you. So then, do those modules get reassessed every semester for the new kids that come in, or, no, it's just?
That's what I think she was speaking to. We get our two, we want it to be data-wise, so we can.
It just stays like that?
And then over the years, as interest change, technology changes, more opportunities will come available, we can sell out modules based on.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Murphy?
So I see Tucker Creek, and Grover C, and Wes Craven Middle's got it, and now we're working on Havelock. What's the projection for HJ?
Eventually, we'd like to add one there. Right now, HJ has three instructors, and that's where we have the Exploring Healthcare that we don't offer any other schools. So currently, they're good, but absolutely would love to add one there in the future, you know, if the opportunity arises.
Anyone else?
I may as well approve it.
Second.
All right. All in favor signify, raise your right hand. All right. Thank you very much. Okay. Ms. Lee, ready for calendar proposals?
My husband brought me a coffee.
Grab him before we start.
Sure, let's talk calendars.
All right. And Ms., Dr. Bautwell is gonna join me up here. She has been instrumental in working with us on this. So today, I'm here to recommend that you receive three drafts, so we're not asking for a vote until January. I'm presenting today three drafts of the 24-25, excuse me, Traditional Academic Calendar. We're following on our timeline, and we'll publicize these three calendars, and over the course of the next 30 days, we will collect stakeholder feedback and bring a calendar for board adoption at the January 2024 Board Ed meeting. I just want to make note that these three calendars, we have shared with our principals and our assistant principals. They got feedback and made changes. It's come to cabinet. We've made some changes to them. And then today at 4:00, we have a meeting where teachers are coming to give their initial feedback, and then we'll put it out. We'll start collecting feedback from stakeholders, and then we'll bring a recommendation in January. So just as a quick summary, first of all, I do want to say that these workdays that are on the calendar are also subject to change. That's some of the places that we have flexibility. We pop them in where traditionally we would have one, but those are some of the things that, along with staff and feedback from stakeholders, are subject to change as we collect our feedback. So when creating a school calendar, local school districts are required to hear to General Statute 115C, 84.2. According to North Carolina's school calendar legislation, school calendars must meet certain criteria included but not limited to. The first day of school cannot be any earlier than the Monday closest to August 26th. The last day of school can be no later than Friday closest to June 11th. It must cover at least nine calendar months, and it has to include a minimum of 185 days or 1,025 hours of instruction. We have typically followed the 180, I mean, the 1,025 hours of instruction for the last 10 years or so. Prior to that, we, we did it by the day. It usually went 80, now it's 185, but it's 1,025. That gives us a little bit of flexibility with the weather situations and things like that. Contract for teachers, they have to, they have to work 215 days a year. Their contract says they work 215 days. Districts have the option to use up to five days for remote instruction for inclement weather. So that means if you have an inclement weather day, children can work remotely up to five days without asking for a waiver. And as for this particular school year we're in now, we've used two because of the two tropical storms that we have had this past fall. Based on the state guidelines, the following three calendar options will be considered. All three of these calendars comply with state law calendar legislation. So I want you to pull up draft one. Draft one is unbalanced semesters, fall exams before winter break. So this has a 14-day difference between semesters. That is the calendar that we currently have, similar to what we have now. Semester one ha, will have 76.5 days for a total of 497.25 hours, and semester two has 92.5 days with 601.25 hours for a total of 1,098.5 hours. And teachers have to work the full 215 days. What I want, my mind just went to something I wanted to mention about this, is that if you count, you take the calendar, you count every day from the Monday closest to August 26th until Christmas, if our goal is to have exams before Christmas, there are only 77 days, school days, five days a week, taking out holidays. So you just cannot extend the first semester anymore because of the parameters if you leave exams before Christmas. So that is the first calendar. Like I said, all of the workdays are very similar to what we have now. I do want to point out that Easter next year is very late. It is the last week of, I think Good Friday is like on a, on what, April 30th? Okay, so it's very late. Basically, we would be out a week and come, traditionally, we take that week as our spring break week. We would come back, and in two weeks, we'd have to start exams. So this calendar does have the option of having a spring break earlier in March, and then giving a four-day weekend around the, and a holiday, and a workday around the Easter vacation. With that being said, that is one of the things that with state feeder, stakeholder feedback, we can negotiate if they prefer it to be a different way. So now we'll look at draft two. Draft two kind of follows our old-school method where the semesters are balanced and exams fall after winter break. So there are no difference between your semesters. Both first and second semesters have 83.5 days, 542.75 hours, for a total of 1,085.5 hours. Again, all of the workdays can change. The Easter and semester, spring semester break can change depending on what we decide, and our teachers work 215 days, just like everything, all the calendars. I do want to mention to you, this school year, if you see that draft one has 1,098 hours built into it, draft two has 1,085, and draft three has 1,065, our calendar this school year has 1,026 instructional hours. 1,026 instructional hours. And we know that the rule or the law says you have to have a minimum of 1,025. We have one hour extra of wiggle room, right? So that, that has, that has really helped us hostage a little bit to being able to make any maneuvers. All three of these calendars, we have significant extra hours that we can put workdays into our calendar. We can put professional development in. We can put early release days back in. We haven't done that in a while. And we can add some things that our staff and our parents and our students typically appreciate to make the year go by. So draft, draft three is the, is the different calendar. It is an extended day. It has a built-in enrichment and remediation time of 20 minutes. I met with, I started out my conversation with high school principals much earlier, like, actually, I think it was in the spring or maybe late winter of last year, we started having the conversation that we were seeing significant academic gaps in reading and mathematics. Their schedule didn't, at high school, is very difficult to build in any type of enrichment or remediation time. And so they, their teachers felt like there was a gap. Principals felt like this was, this is basically a five-minute addition to each of their four blocks, or a 20-minute period when we put it together, so that we do have a built-in. It could be used for a lot of things. It could be remediation. It could be enrichment. It could be home room. It could be ACT, ASBAB tutorials. It could be used for a lot of things at the high school level. It is a three-day difference between semesters. 20 minutes are added to each school day. So semester one is 76.5 days, 522 and a half hours. Semester two is 79.5 days, 543 hours, for a total of 1,065 and a half hours. This calendar would allow for students to start school, compliance with the calendar law, the Monday closest to August 26th. We would actually get through with our last day of school and testing before Memorial Day, and teachers again work 215 days. This calendar will allow us to put some workdays in. It'll put some professional learning opportunities in for our teachers. We can include some early release days. It does take into account those days that are difficult for school to operate. For example, it does give us a hop of required workday. Students are not on campus on election days. Many of our campuses are used for polling, polling places, and it becomes very difficult to manage the flow of visitors on campus on those days. It is a different look, it looks different, but it, it, it could provide us a way of doing what we need to do within the confines of the law as it is set for. And I think it's a, it could be a win-win in the on the stakeholder feedback.
Okay. Lots of questions. Mr. Murphy, I'll start with you.
I'm not talking about Bautwell up here because she's the number to lay with me, and I just want to make sure if she, if I'm all.
I've already received a lot of phone calls of people looking at this, and everybody has told me, please go with three. So I think that we probably have a, a good movement of people just wanting something different, even teachers.
Okay. Ms. Muse?
Okay, so. Why, I'm not seeing a big G on here. So.
Yeah, that's on purpose. So the other two have it because it's pretty straightforward and follows what we've done in the past. That's part of the discussion that needs to happen today, and certainly could happen here, is would you have it right after exam or after Memorial Day?
Oh, no. I think we should have graduation before the holiday weekend because people will want to go out of town, and it would be something different that we've never done before. It might be kind of exciting to have it on the football field at night.
Oh, at night. So I'm not going there, but what I will say.
And it won't be hot.
Well, what I will say is that a few years ago, when we were allowed to start school early, we did do this. There was some concerns because it is a holiday weekend. People were like, people might not want to come and do it on a holiday weekend. We found out, because it was a holiday weekend, people were glad to travel on that weekend. We had a great turnout. And what I will also say about this is that if we do graduation on the Friday before Memorial Day weekend, we still have staff on campus as a workday. One of the things that makes it very difficult, we have found, to have it on Saturdays, is that you have to rely on your staff to pull off an event that large. And so if they're, if we do it on Friday, they're already on campus. They can make it happen, and, and we don't have those problems.
Mr. Manning?
And just kind of looking at this draft three, would, do you anticipate, as you meet with some of our teachers and stakeholders, I noticed that the optional workdays go through still the end of June, the first week of June, and I know we've talked about front-loading some of those workdays because teachers in the building at the end of the year, but yet still having, we know our workforce data shows that we have a lot of beginning teachers or early-career teachers, so they may not have the annual leave day, so they're still working through June. And I think one of the things we were trying to do is students and staff, be nice to stay by the end of May. Go and enjoy your summer. Can you speak to that?
So is this draft, what draft is that? Is that three? Okay. Can you scroll up to the top? Is that the top? Okay. You can see that we have five, six O-days at the beginning of the year, and four required workdays at the beginning of the year. So we have a 10-day block already there. We really, our goal was to do that, exactly what you said. Our maintenance and facilities would love for us to have everybody out of their buildings by the end of May, so that that gives them some, really a whole month to do some of their work. But we have to get 215 days in for our teachers. So if we, I think it depends. If we don't care about getting, getting school done before Memorial Day, which was one of our goals in building this calendar, and we want to go through the whole next week, the last week of May, then we would, we could probably pull some of those up, those O-days up from June. But our goal, well, but, but that, yes, that can happen. It is a give or take.
And can I also add that drafts one and two, Christmas holiday break is about two weeks, give or take. Draft three is three weeks. So when you think about parents having small children, you know, most of working adults are gonna go back to, go back to work probably by that second week in January, whereas the kids are still gonna be out. That could be a hardship on our parents and thinking about the small kids. So you may be able to utilize some of those days there where they can go ahead and get back in and have the, just the thought or.
I agree with that.
Yeah, we, we certainly, now I will tell you, that three-week is a real selling point for our educators, but that is, that is absolutely. And I think that the importance of the next 30 days in getting feedback is gonna be really important, that we, we take that data, we look at it carefully. Some, some of the feedback we get, we can't do. I mean, we just won't be able to do. And so I, I think if people really look at these guidelines, they'll see that it is pretty scripted by the state of what you can and what you can't do. One of our goals is also to have our remediation for our students that need to take summer, take the EOG again in summer, they have to have remediation and cannot start before the last day of school. But it can, it can happen during those workdays. So we are hoping to get that done before the, the first part of June, and also reading, third-grade reading camp will have to happen, and we think we can nail that down within those first two weeks of June, so that basically everybody's on out of the buildings, other than our administrators by that second week of June. And all of that feedback, this feedback we need to get from our stakeholders.
If I might really, Ms. Sciences, just for the good of the public who is watching, those five days specifically that's moving, the hours are there, and we have to get to 2:15. There's a portion of flexibility on that. And so if we wanted those June days to move, they would essentially have to go in that first week of August. And so you would have to do some work there. Because if we push an optional workday into any of these other dates, we're, we're still already calculating 2:15. Moving them into the calendar itself is not going to get us there. We would have to get to put them on the first week of June, but we're gonna have to tack them on to the beginning of August to probably another row of optional workdays.
All right, let me get Ms. Kittinger in first. Is there any conversation about where to add the 20 minutes? Like, on the beginning of the day, or at the end of the day, or split it up 10 minutes each, each part?
I have met with Dr. Hassel in Transportation, and I've met with Mr. Lee and Dr. Miller and I, we've all kind of had some conversations. Originally, what I wanted, my goal, what I wanted was it to be different for every school, because I thought, you know, the high school already starts at seven, let's do theirs at the end of the day. theirs at the end of the day. The middle schools already don't get out of school till three-thirty, let's do theirs at the end, at the beginning of the day and then and the elementary can do ten and ten. Um because of transportation problems, because we share buses with like middle school and um high school, I don't know if that um is is going to work. So it may have to be the same for everyone. Either we add the the time, ten minutes on each end, or twenty minutes on one end or the other, and all three would have to do. I did ask Mr. Lee if he could ask Dr. Hassel to run some simulations on what it would look like if we all went to school at the same time every day. Um if we went, you know, and and we did like seven fifty to thirteen and and um so he's working on some scenarios for what that could, might could look like. We used to all come to school at the same time. We did not have staggered um beginning and end times. Um but that made, we had some double runs in school, in different schools. So um we went away from that hoping to solve one problem, but I I don't know that it's completely solved. We don't have the two double runs, what we consider legitimate double runs, but we do have kids that are having to wait um until the bus arrives depending on what the status is. So um I can't, I can't, I don't know the answer to that yet. It'll kind of depend on um how the board, what the board wants, how the school and the stakeholders um respond.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Muse.
So based on the new calendar, summer school, when would we want summer school to be completed by?
So we only um for we meet, we only do, we don't do summer school like we did the year before last or last year because that was an S R state mandate, that you had to have a summer school. We only do two types on a on a annual basis. We do the EOC, EOG remediation retest, and we do the reading camp or um the grade for reading camp.
Right.
So I'm gonna let her talk about the EOG, EOC remediation part first.
So um I we are allowed to begin remediation during the school year after the initial administration has occurred. So if a student takes an EOG on Monday, remediation can start occurring even though the school is still in. We are not allowed to administer the assessment period until students are out of the year, meaning we could start assessments um on the first workday. So we have historically steered clear of graduation um just because we do have a lot of staff with family and so we have usually steered clear of that. So if you wouldn't mind scrolling up just a little bit um into May for me so I can kind of look at the, perfect. Um so ideally, you might not see remediation begin, or excuse me, retesting, opportunity to retest until after Memorial Day. Um normally, we're going to have about four days of the opportunity to retest because you, we can get elementary, middle school, that's no problem because they have at most three subject areas. But our high schools have four um EOCs and so we do try to allow for four days there. There's no set amount of time of remediation that has to occur. Technically, we can remediate for one hour and we could, certainly we don't do that. But if you start remediation during the school year, um assessment could begin as early as the twenty-seven would probably be most ideal. I don't know that we would start it on that twenty-third um to allow for graduation, but that is the.
We could start it on Tuesday after Memorial Day, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday and Friday. And so that or of that summer school um.
You know, I mean.
Yeah, that one we know you're the last day of May, at the last school day of May. And then I'm gonna let Mr. Furth to talk about reading camp.
So we are required by the state to do seventy-two hours of um free-to-achieve camp um in the summer, and that is for second and third grade students that um based on their test data are um required to attend. And um based off of, you know, looking at this calendar, we traditionally try to do summer camp before July. So with this camp right here, um and we would, you know, of course, get feedback from our teachers, um we would probably start that following week and then get our seventy-two hours in. And that way, once they, you know, get the camp in, then they're done for the summer. But we would, we would, of course, bring that plan to the board and share what that um schedule would look like before we put it out. And and usually it's ten to twelve days. Um it's basically a full school day for our students.
I think I think it's important to mention this, sometimes we have an overlap which makes it very difficult. A child might be non-proficient on a third grade EOG and needs to come to remediation, but they also might be eligible for summer camp and so there's an overlap there. This new calendar would separate those two. Um and so it wouldn't be when a student has to be officials.
Okay, good. Mr. Murphy?
Um Brent's comments on the uh workdays and stuff kind of jogged my memory on some uh things I've heard from teachers at the beginning of this current semester is, gosh, can y'all give us some extra workdays at the beginning to go through all this training that we have to do because it's ridiculous and we need just days just for training? And so it may be that we need to front-load an extra couple of days because I heard from so many that were like, we don't have time to get everything we need to get done to prepare our classroom and have to go through all these videos that all of them have to do, no matter how long they've been there, like can, if if, some of them are like, Scott, we've been here for thirty years, why do we still have to do this training?
It's stated so.
All right, and so, I mean, I think that that's a good point that um Mr. Manning brought up is trying to front-load that.
Absolutely. Those days, like I said, those days are optional. We can, certainly that's the feedback from our um our teachers and we will take into consideration. Um I do want to say that if if we change any of those days, like at the Christmas time, and we make them school days, then we won't, we 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 can't really make a change, but it would give more instructional hours into the school calendar. So second semester.
It's a calendar of days.
That's right.
Teachers are days.
Semes, it's teach, right. Students are hours, teachers are days.
Okay.
And that, and um so if we add any instructional days, like in January, then second semester's going to, is the the balance is going to start getting less balanced, all the all the out.
Okay. Ms. Clark.
Thank you. I like the extended day program. I think you would do uh yourself good though, if you remember, we have not just teachers as stakeholders, uh but we've got parents and um our students. And I think they would love to hear about it because some of them think that the, when you talk about extended day, um it's what I would advocate, we add two more hours, but that's not what what you advocate. I know that's not going to happen, but you need, you need some clarification and I certainly think it will help with the gaps.
Yes, ma'am.
So thank you.
Ms. Wagner's going to speak about the.
Two hours?
specificity of the the twenty minutes. No, don't say that.
I think it's a good idea. I think it's a good idea.
Somebody in that video clip you had said, she said they're going to it.
No, no, sorry.
I just wanted to share something in regards to the communication piece and regards to soliciting feedback because I think that there's been some frustration from our stakeholders in the past. And it comes back on the board and so I wanted to be sure that we were legally communicating and sharing that this is not a vote. So I think when people think that they're sharing their feedback, that they're voting for a specific calendar. And then if you choose a calendar that isn't where the majority felt that they were voting, then they feel that you didn't listen to them. So this is an opportunity to collect feedback so that we can make adjustments if needed um and hear what they're saying. So we are truly listening, all of us, to be able to make an informed decision that's best for everybody. So I just want everybody to understand that it is not a vote because we've had some concerns that have been expressed in the past.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
Um, Dr. Miller?
And I'll also piggyback on that. Probably what will happen is none of the three will be exactly as they're presented today.
Right.
Because with feedback, we will move rates, we will adjust. So the best-case scenario, we get feedback on all the calendars, what you like and what you dislike about each one, that works for your, you as an employee, you as a family, you as a student. And then take the calendar that we can make, consider those recommendations and implement them, and it'll probably be a hybrid of all of these calendars to try to meet the requirements of the two fifteen and student hours. So we will listen and probably bring back a recommendation that is different a little bit than any of these three.
But we will, one of the things I want to make sure I I I mention is that today's meeting that happens at four o'clock, every principal was required to send us a staff member to be a part of this initial. Now, we, if I didn't invite anyone to come, I think we we have like seventy-six people who have RSVP'd, so people are interested, right? Uh we're going to get their feedback and then we're going to put it out. Um it'll be on our main webpage, a way for us to collect data. We do need, you're exactly right, we need to go to um to have the, have our staff members go back and talk to the students and get some feedback from students. Parents will have the opportunity, but we need to make sure that we're getting some student um feedback as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I reckon.
You go ahead and respond, Ms. Clark.
I defer to you, ma'am, to you.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Recognizing that it's not a vote and and I agree with you, but we have to get their feedback.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's been the criticism, not that they didn't have a vote, but we didn't even consult with them. And you have a lot of high school students who are concerned about this intervening with sports or after-school jobs, and that's just not going to happen. So if we cut it off at the cart or whatever, the horse barrel or.
Okay, anybody, I know Ms. Muse, Mr. Ippok, do you have anything?
I'm good.
You're good?
I would just say, I would say one thing, um I, the follow-up on the parent input and and the kids, students input, I think that's a good thing as well. And I know you typically do that anyway, but um especially with that three-week holiday Christmas break, I do worry about that for parents.
Absolutely.
So I want them to be able to have that place and space to voice that.
I think another pi- piece of that is to, it's going to be very important to bring the calendar and approve it in January so parents have lots of time to plan for because they're not used to having workdays. You know, parents also haven't had to plan for teachers to have any workdays.
Right.
And so that's, we're going back to putting some workdays in there and they will have to plan for that in their um their schedules.
Right, and 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 also making that decision early would allow some of our community partners to to get up to speed and plan to be doing camps and those kinds of things those weeks. Okay, that's what, that was your point, Dr. Miller? All right.
I will great community partners that if they will start making plans as soon as the calendar is approved.
Right.
And will provide families, um even if they're not consistently a part of their group, um we have partners that on snow days.
Right.
The parents don't have plans for that, they add slots for students. So they will begin that planning as soon as the calendar is approved.
Okay, Ms. Muse, anything?
It went away.
Did it go away? We answered it? All right, and I just want to give our, Ms. Watson and Ms. Rowden, if you if you have any comments at this point.
I'll use my teacher voice, I guess.
He's bringing you a microphone. I think we'd be remiss if we didn't allow you to chime in here.
Um the, looking at this, um so my colleagues and I just recently talked about how we wish we had more time in the day. So um that's, I'm very excited about that. My question is, um where.
Y twenty, and I'm going to go with Ms. Clark, why not go before?
Oh, Lord.
Well, well.
Bravo.
I I I felt like that we needed to do something, um if you think about the high school, and a lot of our calendar decisions do have to take the high school into account. Um if you think about four blocks, five minutes a block, you pretty much are adding that time. So that that was kind of my original rationale. However, in thinking about true remediation, um research, evidence-based research tells us that twenty minutes a day for three to four days a week can make a powerful change. Um Ms. Clark has, she has, she has beat her fist at me a time or two about what are we going to do? And this is an opportunity for us to put in a built-in time that principals don't have to try to carve out. It's hard to carve out any extra minutes in our day. So um twenty minutes, I, we we did do a little quick survey yesterday about what surrounding counties and things. And um for the most part, um there is, it, there's discrepancies. Some some are exactly what they have to have, some are not quite what they have to have. Um and some of them are anywhere from five to fifteen minutes. We did not find any one, one school district was twenty minutes, which is what we're proposing. We didn't find anybody that were above that unless they were a truly extended-day school where they um offered, you know, a two-hour after-school time and parent, they, you know, they had snack and sometimes even provided dinner, but that's a whole different calendar and different model.
Yeah, now I was just curious, and also the the workday, um I I love that because um I'm hearing from other educators how we as teachers need to come together to collaborate and that we definitely give us those opportunities.
Absolutely. And one of our things that we hear more than anything from our teachers is that they want us to start by having our district-wide PLCs.
Well, that helps them with their continuing ed credits.
And it's almost impossible right now because of the way our calendar is. We don't have any built-in days to do that kind of stuff. So I think um it'll it'll provide much better professional development for our teachers, it'll provide collaboration opportunities, and it'll provide um a built-in remediation slash enrichment for our students.
Okay. Dr. Miller?
And and to speak to Ms. Clark's point earlier in the day, when we had um classrooms filled with substitutes, having that opportunity for an English teacher at Hatlock High School to collaborate with an English teacher at West Craven High School and talk about the folks that are teaching the same curriculum without full day, you can't, the half-days, by the time that they travel together, the time's gone. So by able to build those days in, um substitute teachers are able to talk with certified teachers who are teaching those subjects. So it provides a lot of collaborations, um not only within the school but across the district.
Okay.
I think that would have one other thing she.
Um so two things is that we did work aggressively to try to put, to count out and calculate the days for the grading period so not every workday here is like locked in to be a time when we're finalizing our grades. So we did work hard to make sure that, you know, there might be some of that, but for the most part, these optional um and required workdays do allow for professional development instead of trying to get grades in before report card or progress report is on the map. The other thing is, I just want to stress that this is the traditional calendar, right? And so not for the public to understand, we are still awaiting the calendar um for Craven Community College. We've heard it's in draft mode and we should have it soon, but one, another commitment that's important to mention is that regardless of what draft is chosen, we will work hard with this flexibility to try to align them as much as possible with regard to days out because many of our early college kids have younger siblings. If the two are conflicting one another, it does make it difficult for parents. And so that will be the next um big commitment we make is once we are able to get that calendar and start preparing for our early colleges, we will try to align those as closely as possible.
All right, Ms. Kitzner?
This may not be relevant at this point and it kind of speaks to your point, Ms. Rowden. Um and I'm sorry if this is kind of like the devil's advocate here, but the twenty-minute thing, um Ms. Watson, how how much time do you allow for your students um between classes, like for passing time? Is it like four minutes?
Um it depends on the transition.
Okay.
If it's um core class to core class, they go from one door to the next door. So we don't have like the bell ringing, they're just everywhere in the hallway. They line up, they go from this door to this door.
Okay.
From core class to core, core and three minutes.
Okay, and at the high school, it's maybe three to four minutes too? Okay, so I'm just thinking out loud here and this could be totally off-base, but the twenty-minute time, and I guess it depends on the conversation of how each school or how everybody's feedback goes to how they want to apply this twenty minutes to their days, um maybe where they're going to.
This time cannot be absorbed by.
By passing time.
It it is.
Make sure we utilize the twenty minutes to its full capacity. Got it.
It does not, I mean, all of the the transition time, the beginning school, how to get them to the buses and lunch, that's already built into their calendar. We're not, we're not absorbing this twenty minutes. And that was one of the conversations we've had, I had.
Okay.
The um transportation, you know, they said, well, we already get there ten minutes early because you've got to get them there in time to eat breakfast.
Mm-hmm.
No, we're not absorbing, this is a twenty-minute instructional time.
Okay.
That will not be absorbed into the existing schedule.
Okay, my mind just went to like, well, we're going to use this remediation in a different classroom and then we're going to take these couple of minutes to get the kids to the classroom. I'm like, well, that takes away from twenty minutes, they're down, they're down to eighteen minutes and they have to take a couple of minutes to pack up their stuff at the end of the day and all that, so squirrels.
Yes, absolutely.
Sorry. Thank you.
Protecting that is very vital.
Okay.
Okay. All right, Ms. Muse.
Um to add on to that, and the longer they have in-between classes, the more trouble they can get into.
Mm-hmm.
I mean.
The bathrooms.
Just being honest. Um so I'm going to ask you to be mindful, I mean, it's it's been um. So I'm gonna ask you to be mindful, I mean, it's, it's been discussed. It seems that our high school students do better later in the day than they do first thing in the morning.
And research would say that.
Correct. But in the crux of that, and I don't think transportation should drive instruction, instruction should drive everything we do in this district, everything. But we have significant traffic issues in James City as well, and that's gonna get worse before it gets better. So that's something else to think about. But I mean, if, if it's proven that students do better later, I mean, that's something to take into consideration.
Absolutely, and I, I was not a part of this discussion of how that was decided, what group would start earlier and later or whatever, but that's certainly something that we have had conversations about. I think that's something we need, we need, if we're going to continue staggering, beginning and ending, and we are, we would ever consider changing it, that's something we definitely get feedback from parents, because...
Well, it's hard for parents, I mean, the littles, they don't start to school until eight-thirty, but most parents have to be worked by eight, so in S...
They don't start at eight.
But then middle school's eight-thirty, so, but I mean, even still. Well, I agree.
I don't know, that's dual, right?
All right, well, thank you, Ms. Lee, I just have a couple of quick things just to wrap up. I just wanna be sure we're clear. I know you checked on neighboring counties just for benchmarking. We know other counties have basically done something similar to this by adding on twenty minutes to the day in order to accomplish our goals for instructional time, which is obviously the most important thing. And then I, I just wanna be sure, I think I understood Mr. Griffin to say we would do basically summer camp that first week of June under this calendar.
I think it takes about twelve days, so we could do it at first, but we could still be done by about second week of June.
And that is extra compensation for our teachers.
Yes, they're paid for that.
So by doing it outside of their regular day...
They're getting some extra funds, which is another win-win. Okay, excellent, so I, I just think, and everybody can chime in here, but I think what I'm hearing from the board is, is again, most important thing is instruction, and we want instruction to drive transportation and not vice versa. And if we have to figure out ways of making adjustments there, we'll, we'll do that.
And I have one more thing, have you guys been keeping up with any districts that are testing calendar law?
Funny that you had to open that door.
There may be some that are never testing that.
Yes.
But we heard clear from the board that you would prefer to stay within the calendar.
Yes.
Now, if we would prefer it, but I was just wondering if there's anybody testing that.
Yes, we'll talk about that later, I don't think we need to bring that up here.
Thank you very much.
We don't wanna cause problems with our neighbors. All right, with that, Ms. Lee, I don't know if you get any break here. You've got parents' bill of rights unless we wanna break.
Can we take up ten minutes?
Yes.
Sure, okay. All right, we'll, we'll break for ten minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Call this meeting back to order. All right.
It's my last few days today.
Ms. Lee is back?
I'm back, okay. And I am going to provide for you an overview of the Parents' Bill of Rights. I stress to you that this is a very three-hundred-foot view of this. I encourage you as a board and as the public to read this policy. It is very detailed and intricate, but I do feel like it is very important for us to provide you an overview of what this Bill of Rights, Senate Bill forty-nine, Session Law two oh-two-three dash one oh-six is all about. And I will say, I talked with Mr. Gatchel. Any questions that you have about this, you're gonna need to direct to Mr. Gatchel. And he, because he will be the person to be able to answer any of these questions, okay?
Okay.
All right, so we'll get started. Parents' Bill of Rights. Craven County Schools recognizes the importance of parental involvement and responsibility in their child's education. We recognize the value of family engagement and believe the education of children is an ongoing partnership between the home and the school. And we believe parents are children's first teachers. We all believe those things, and these have not changed because of a new Bill of Rights. The twelve educational rights of parents are listed on the district website. That, these are links, I think it's a little bit up. My link, it didn't show, it's not showing. Oh, there it is, yep, okay. That is a link in the PDF, so if someone wants to see it. But to find it on our website, you just go to the About Us page, and it's listed alphabetically under Parents' Bill of Rights. All right, next slide. I want to talk a little bit about opt-out versus opt-in. What is the difference? Opt-out means every student will participate unless a parent notifies the school in writing that they do not want their child to participate. And typically, we have been an opt-out system in most things. Opt-in means only students whose parents have completed the opt-in form are allowed to participate. So the default is you don't participate unless your parent opts you in, which is different than what we typically have done. I do want to say, please remember that we struggle with getting parents to sign field trip forms sometimes, just to let their kids go to the wife or swim lessons or whatever. So we do anticipate that the trend with this will be our data is going to really be all over the place, because it's really going to depend on who opts their children in. Parents have legal rights with regards to their child's education, including the following: the right to consent or withhold consent for participation in reproductive health and safety education policy. This is Policy thirty-five forty, Comprehensive Health Education Program. Parents will now opt-in their child to any health and safety education programs. All programming must be age-appropriate in grades K through four. And the curricular is related but not limited to sexually transmitted diseases, reproductive health, and safety education. This previous policy was already in place, but it was an opt-out, and now it's opt-in, with the exception of the age-appropriate education in K five-four. Next slide. The right to seek a medical or religious exemption from immunization requirements. Parents may request exemption from the immunization requirements for entry to public school on medical or religious grounds according to Policy forty-one-ten. Families should provide a written statement of their religious objections to the immunization requirements. And this policy has been in place, so it's not a change. Next slide. The right to review statewide standardized assessment results as part of the state report card. The state report card and all standardized assessment results are available on the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction website, and the information link can also be found on our district website. So this access has always been there, available for the public. The right, next slide. The right to request an evaluation of their child for an academically or intellectually gifted program, we call that AIG, or for identification of a child with disability, and this is Policy thirty-five twenty. The District AIG Plan, which is a link, addresses evaluations for academically or intellectually gifted programming. All special education programs operating within Craven County Schools are in compliance with policies governing students for children with disabilities as adopted by the State Board of Education. So these policies have been in place. And I would encourage you to go in and look at our District AIG Plan. It is very comprehensive in addressing how we meet the needs of those students. Next slide. The right to access information related to the unit's policies for promotion or retention, including high school graduation requirements. This is Student Promotion Policy thirty-four twenty, and Graduation Requirements thirty-four sixty that we looked at today. Promotion and retention standards have always been listed in our student handbooks. And so any changes to that coming forward would appear on the website, as well as make changes to the school-level student handbook. Next slide. The right to receive student report cards on a regular basis that clearly depict and grade the student's academic performance in each class/course, the student's conduct, and the student's attendance. So we provide report cards every nine weeks, and progress reports are provided every four-and-a-half weeks. Currently, only our K-five report cards include conduct grades. So we are working to include conduct slash office referral slash discipline, some format of that, on the report card for grades six through twelve. So that's something that we are working on. It's not a natural piece of the power school. We've got to find the field to make that happen, but we're working on that so that we can do that. Next slide. The right to access information related to the North Carolina Public Education System, state standards, report card requirements, attendance requirements, and textbook requirements. That information is available on the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction, and that access has always been available to the public. The right to participate in parent-teacher organizations. All parents are encouraged to participate in parent-teacher conferences. Every school in the district has opportunities for parents to participate in their schools. It may vary from school to school, but some examples would be parent-teacher organizations, booster clubs, volunteers, fundraising, school improvement. Every school improvement team has to have a parent rep. So these opportunities have always been available, but we will be delineating them on the school website, where it will be listed with a description of each opportunity. Next slide. The right to opt-in to certain data collections for their child. The creation, sharing, or storage of a biometric scan, blood, or DNA of his or her child, except required by law. Their child's participation in protected student information surveys. Healthcare practitioner providing medical treatment for their child, except in emergencies. And the use of well-being questionnaire health screening forms with K-three students. And the parents must receive a copy of the survey prior to making the decision to opt their child in or not. One of the things that, there is a disclaimer at the bottom. Federal law says that the federal survey of the CDC's Youth Risk Behavior Survey and the National Youth Tobacco Survey, the federal survey expectations that those will remain opt-out, and so that's the only two that will be opt-out. The rest of them are opt-in.
I have a question. If I may for a moment, are we mandated to give those surveys?
I'm gonna let Ms.
I believe so.
I'd be happy to give you that specifically in closed session. However, I will just say generally that the conflict between state and federal law that sometimes happens is something that I imagine in the next fifteen point four months will be addressed by courts. Somebody is not going to like the conflict there, and somebody is likely to pay a lawyer a personal court back. It's a deal to recognize a brand-new law like this. Despite the best efforts of the legislature, to be clear, there are inevitably ambiguities that may be applied specific facts to the actual language that we have when we have no guidance from the courts as to what that is. We're left a little bit in the woods without the precise math. Courts will then fill in those blanks and make our math more precise as we know. So I often say, folks don't really care what lawyers think, they care what judges think. And so at this point, we have not had judges to work with, but things like that that are showing very much, I think, are likely to be the subject of litigation.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Ms. Hughes?
Before we get too far down the road, and since we have talked about
Your microphone.
Report cards provided every nine weeks.
Mike, pull your microphone.
Sorry. Before we get too far down the road, since we just talked about report cards, especially where we talked about comments and stuff like that on report cards, I believe Ms. Stacy knows where I'm going with this. Since we decided last meeting that kids get actually what they earn, and it does apply to this, I have had several teachers express to me their concerns about putting comments on report cards, because they've kind of been led to believe that they're not supposed to put negative comments. They actually suggested to me that they need training.
We'll have some optional work, we'll have some required work.
So, but it's like I explained to the teacher, I mean, if Tommy comes to school all period and sleeps for an hour and a half every day, other than putting does not disturb class, you put the truth, so.
Yeah, and I don't know, I don't know. The only comment that we have provided is that if they are, if they're in the exceptional children's program and their course of study is modified, and their grade is inflated because of those modifications, that you would put a asterisk in your comment would be, these grades are based on a modification.
Counsel.
So I'm not giving you my opinion about this for illustrative purposes about, so one fifteen C dash seventy-six point two-five, A sub seven, which is the relevant portion of the Parents' Bill of Rights. I'm gonna read it out, and then I'm going to break kind of the language out there. So the right to receive student report cards on a regular basis that, here's the operating phrase, clearly depict, which is not defined, and grade the student's academic performance, so that's one thing, right? In each class or course, the student's conduct and the student's attendance. So you have, on a regular basis, that clearly depict, which is not defined, and grade, not or, and, grade, conduct, performance, attendance.
So teachers need to put how they're
I'm not going there, okay? I'm just reading the language out. So for the illustrative point that we will need guidance first from the State Board of Education as to what those expectations are, and eventually from the court regarding that. Now, all of us have our understanding of what the meaning of those words are, and so we will do our best with the fortune that the courts don't frequently determine that their understanding of the meaning has the rest of the check. So again, each particular circumstance will need to be evaluated in terms of particular facts we're looking for with that. That is the challenge that your administrators are going to be facing in the next month to two months, is how to try to comply with words that are not defined specifically in our framework.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. Continue, please.
All right, thank you. Next slide. The right to review all available records of materials their child has borrowed from a school library. All books checked out through the library via the child's Destiny account can be viewed. And Policy thirty-two-ten provides parents a process to inspect and object to instructional material used in their child's school. We just revamped that policy recently. Currently, parents would have to request a printout from the school, because parents don't have access to Destiny. We are looking into seeing if that's possible, but with just a comment or an email, parents have the right to request any materials that their child has checked out from the library. Next slide. So to summarize these, parents have rights in the following, to the following information. And the process for accessing these rights have not changed. Education records, school records, state report card, promotion-retention policies, state standards, reproductive health and safety education materials. Next slide. These are rights parents have to information, and I just want you to note the changes here. So they have the right to student report cards. There's no change in K-five, but grades six through twelve will be expanded to include some kind of a conduct grade. Protected information surveys and opt-in process will be implemented beginning in January. Textbooks, instructional materials, and supplemental materials review. We updated Policy thirty-two-ten with a process on how to request access to that. Clubs and activities, a list of all clubs available with a description for at each school will be provided on the school's website. And the well-being questionnaires and health screening forms opt-in process will begin in January. I need to say to you that we just got some of the templates from the state yesterday. So we are seven days from Christmas break, and we have to put this together, and we have to share it and train our, we have to get our principals up to date with that. So at our next principals' meeting, we will be reviewing these policies. So it will be late January before these things are in place, these things that have changes. The timing is just poor, but we're doing the very best we can, and we hope to have all of this, the forms created, because they gave us a template, but we have to put it on our letterhead, and we have to get it all jibbed up. So with that being said, late January, these things will go into effect and will be in compliance. And then the last slide is just a questions slide for Mr. Gatchel.
Yeah, any questions from the board that we can have in open session? Anyone?
Again, this is just a brief overview. There's a lot involved in this new policy, I mean, this new law, but in trying to be transparent, trying to make sure you all are aware, principals, we spent a long time last week going through every section of it, because parents, I mean, principals need to know what's in there, they need to be able to take it back to their school, make sure their teachers know what's there. It's a significant amount of legislation.
All right, thank you. And obviously
We're still up.
Obviously, we've got an effective date of January, and you've got to wait for guidance from DPI, so all of these things don't happen overnight. So I think in the interest of transparency, everybody can see, we know what the changes are, we're working to try and move everything in that direction. Okay, with that, yes, you're up for out-of-state field trip.
Yeah. So I'm trying to pull it up on my thing, because I can't see any of that up there anymore. All right, we have one out-of-state field trip that I'm bringing to you today. New Bern High School's band and chorus have planned a trip to Atlanta, Georgia. It is April eighteenth through twenty-first of 2024. There are no other activities involved, and all of the requirements have been submitted and are ready for approval.
I move we approve it.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? You'll raise your right hand. Any discussion? Do that, we just did it. Okay, so we could, it's eleven-twenty, I'm just looking at the agenda. Time of lunch will be here at twelve? Yeah, lunch will be here at twelve, so we could. That's the question, do we want to? Yeah, I guess we'll just keep moving. Okay, all right, Mr. Lee, you'll come on. We're debating whether or not to go ahead and do public input, but I think let's go ahead and do this.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm bringing forth, or we are bringing forth, an approval today to proceed with the next lease for our Apple devices, and this is the lease for the raised, for soon the trade, six through twelve. Our current Apple lease, the last payment was made in October of 2023, so this will be the next lease for four years, that would take us through 2027. A few things to note on the new lease is we did, it's more this time, it's worth of profit lease payment of $800,000, one point one billion. The reason for the increase is the instruction team has identified a need for teachers to receive new iPads, so there's an increase on the device side, which is right in the rest of the place, pretty much the rest of the lease is very similar to what we did previously. One thing that we did add this time was the fourth year of Apple Care, which is the larger, for the devices. When we started this thing in the last year, the lease on the Suda devices, there was more repair leads in that last year. So we went ahead and added Apple Care through the entirety of the lease, and that was a very small increase in the grand scheme of things. The difference in the devices for is a thirty-two, we're going from a thirty-two gig memory device to a sixty-four, that's our baseline now, which is good news. We struggled a little bit with storage in the thirty-two gig devices, and this should address that. So those were the main things about the lease, the first payment would be due September of 2024, and you have all the supporting documents assembled. We've been working with Eric and Smith on the documents for review. They have been agreed to both Matt and Eric and Smith, so we're in place with that. And also want to mention that this was, the mechanism for purchasing was state contract two oh-two-one N. That was the mechanism that we use for purchasing the devices. Can you have any questions? Can you have any questions?
Okay. Ms. Kids here? Did you say new iPads for teachers?
New iPads for teachers.
Okay, so do they already have iPads or do they have laptops?
They have laptops, so they will keep their laptops.
Okay.
This is a device and Ms. Lee or somebody can maybe help me with the instructional aid. The teachers need a device during instruction that mimics a student device.
Right.
Unless it's for an iPad.
So, um, the- Currently, we have some older generation iPads, especially in our lower grades. Most of our middle and high have not had iPads unless they wrote a grant for it or something like that. Our students have iPads. And so in order to mimic what they are doing and what they're seeing their children are doing and to be able to, um, instruct remotely and walk around the classroom at the same time and do that, it's very important that they have the same device in their hand that students have. That does not minimize, though, the need that they need a full laptop to be able to do much of their work as well.
So every, not every teacher will get one?
Yes, every teacher will get one.
Every single teacher in our district will get one?
Yeah, I know.
Okay. And are we getting rid of any of our old student iPads? Are they all, some of them that are just-
We will. Um, what we'll do at the end of the lease, we collect the old devices and we, um, put those devices up with Dina. And if you remember last time, what we used that, those purposes for was to purchase the teacher devices on the MacBook side.
Okay.
So when we get the devices back, we sell them and then use that money for something else.
Okay. 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 Here it is.
On the instruction.
No issue. It's everybody.
We'll stand together.
Y'all better hold hands. I, I hate these iPads. High school students hate doing their work on iPads. I have a high school student that had to do her work on an iPad. Mr. Lee? No, no. Where did Kaylee keep her school-issued device? You know, she picked it up from New Bern High School and threw it in the back of her car. She didn't even charge it. And during remote learning, when some poor little kid didn't have a device, she left it at Brent Manning's church with them, and she didn't use it. We are not preparing children to be career and work-ready on an iPad. Even in business and industry, we're not. They're not going to do their day-to-day work on an iPad. And as far as fiscal responsibility goes, we can buy two Chromebooks for the cost of one iPad. And we were supposed to be an Apple district, and we're going to do all of our repairs. And we're going to do all of this technology, and it's going to be great. And everybody's going to walk around in the land of Apple and everybody's going to be happy. But now we have Apple Care because our district is not doing any repairs on anything ourselves. We're coordinating expenses to be farmed out because we're not doing anything in-house anymore. And it's costing this district an exorbitant amount of money. And I've got all kinds of stuff, and kids don't have a mouse in high school. Kaylee hates it. This is not what they're going to go to work on every day. High school kids hate it. And I have even asked high school kids from other districts, if, what do you guys use? They use laptops for their device. And I said, well, what if you had to use an iPad? And they're like, there's no way we could do our work on an iPad. So I challenge everybody at the district level, close your little MacBook over there and do everything that you do all day long on an iPad. Everybody up here. You too.
He never has his own iPad.
And I'd like to see Ms. Altman do all of her work every day on an iPad.
Mr. Manning and Ms. Stacy attended the Apple Institute with us, and as far as using it in business and industry and Fortune 500 companies, how many did they say used Apple products?
All of them.
Thank you.
Apple has laptops. Okay.
I would say this, um, and maybe also our teacher could speak to this. I think that at our elementary school level, iPads have become very handy for educational I think at middle school, um, they're effective in ways. I would like it, I'd like to see us not rely so much on computers as what we've been doing. Um, but I still think it has effectiveness. Some of the things that I heard at our last, um, conference that me and Ms. Stacy and Manning and Mr. Ippok were at was that students were tired of iPads, students were tired of Chromebooks, students were tired of technology, period. But then at the same time, we're creating, um, competitions. Uh, so it's kind of its own little district world. And so I really, I think that the only time that we're hitting a bumping, bump in the road is at the high school level. And I think it's because in high school, we begin to see different needs, different pathways. And so I think it's more we need to look at the hybrid solution at our high school level just because of, um, the different areas and needs that students are going into. But I also see, um, because I do have a background in drafting and CAD and drawing, and I have my own 3D printer and things like that, I'm beginning to see a push for that stuff to also work on an iPad. So I, as of right now, the world struggles in that. And I would generally, being that I was taught on a regular computer how to do drafting and things, I still know the old shortcut keys to make things go a little faster, but most people don't do that anymore. But I can see more or less that we need to start looking at hybrid solutions, um, to move forward. I do recognize that when I talk to students, they're tired of the old equipment because that has a hard time staying charged and all that kind of stuff. And so I don't think we need to technically delay on making decisions because we do have to make decisions to keep things moving forward. But I think that from my history and background in IT, no matter whether it's an iPad or a Chromebook or whatever, once they get old, you're going to have problems. And more than likely, with a Chromebook, just from my, just from my recommendations of when I help people with computers and stuff, they're cheaper, but most time you replace them twice as fast because they just don't last. So you're going to end up paying the same amount, whether your, your, your lease is going to be shorter because you're going to have to replace it earlier, or your lease is going to be longer because they're designed to last longer. So I think that that just kind of covers that.
So just to kind of follow up on that hybrid model, I think that's very important. So we, we absolutely have to make sure that the coursework that our students are taking, they have the device that is best suited for that course. So currently, we, at our high school level is really what we're, we're, we're talking about. We have classes that, especially in our CTE department, that students are given a device to use during that class because they do need something different than, than the iPad. We can meet that need individually per class to make sure that we have a device. And, and that happened last year, we had, last semester, we had several students that were having some issues with the community college. And Mr. Ral, Mr., um, Mr. Ral, Mr. Frevel, he immediately, we identified who those children were or students were, and he immediately, um, assigned them a Windows device. So we have that and we can add some to make them a hybrid model for kids that need it for a specific purpose, um, moving forward. But, um, that's, that's kind of, I, I do, I do think that it can be the best of both worlds if we, if we move in that direction.
So I, I have one clarification. I, I think, Mr. Lee, you said that this was just for students in grades six through 12.
Plus the teacher devices.
Plus the teacher devices. So what, in, in this scenario, and you have to remember, some of us have not been here the entire time we've been in Apple district. So, you know, my immediate question when I saw this on the agenda was I, I didn't know the term of the lease we were discussing. Has it always been a four-year lease term?
The first lease was four-year lease.
Okay, and so is this our third four-year lease?
Well, the first lease would have been the four-year. So this is only, this is the second one that I've been following up.
Okay, but you believe, I mean, I, I know, you know. Yes, Ms. Altman?
I think the initial lease was a three-year lease, and the second lease was a four-year lease because we included the different expenses and the pads. And so this lease again was a four-year lease before adding the teacher's.
Okay, but as it stands, we've, we've basically been using these devices for seven years.
Just for, they replace them every time in the lease.
Okay, right, but we've had Apple products for seven years in the district, correct? Okay, all right. And so, you know, I know they have a huge sect, sector of the educational market. I guess my question is, there has to be data on how, how these devices compare at different grade levels in terms of student success, engagement, those sorts of things. I mean, we're hearing lots of different things, I guess.
Right, we just had that study done too about how much time kids are spending on the devices.
Right, I mean, I think, I think the board has a lot of different issues about, and questions about those sorts of issues, so that would perhaps be helpful. But, um, I just want a little bit of perspective on that for those of us who haven't been here since the beginning. Okay, and so I guess my question is also then, what would happen with the elementary students and their devices?
They were ju, they were purchased outright using national funding. So we're in a good place for those for the next several years, but those would have to be addressed two or three years from now.
What if they need repairs? What if they need repairs? Do they have Apple Care or do we?
Apple Care is included.
I think it's important to note that when we initially began, we were not doing the Apple Care. But as we have become a one-to-one device, we don't have the, it's not the fact that how people can't do the, um, some of the work, it's the fact of the matter is that we don't have enough people to be able to keep our devices up. It's, and, and it's, I mean, 20 years ago, if kids iPad or laptop or whatever, if it went down, they could go without it for a little bit of time, but students, that is their instructional technology now. They can't go without it, even more than about, you know, a day. They need it because student instruction is being delivered and collected, um, through that model. And, and I, and I just, I know, I know that people are concerned about the, um, the amount of time kids are on iPads. But if you go into our schools, our teachers are teaching, kids are in, in act, I mean, I was in a classroom last week, they were, they had manipulatives, they had math, they had paper and pencil, they were doing mathematics in the calculator. So even though it is used more now than it was 15 years ago, 10 years ago, teachers are still delivering strong direct instruction, and kids are being engaged in ways outside of, 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 of device.
Well, I appreciate that, and I, I think that that was obvious from my ti, time with Mr. Manning and many of you at Apple Institute. I think the engagement is, is obvious, the benefit of that, that you get from the device. I think the other thing I'm hearing though from board members, which I think everybody needs to also consider, is we certainly have students at some levels with certain interests for whom, and we've had student reps in our meeting, for whom the iPad is obviously inadequate. And I, I think it's, it would be probably the strong will of the board that to the extent we have children, high school students in particular, who have particular academic dreams, those dreams ought not be squashed because they don't have access-
Absolutely.
-to a device that allows them to pursue engineering or whatever the case may be. So I think to the extent that that's, they're not in a CTE course, um, you know, and I've been in some of those courses where you walk in and everybody has, you know, a, a different device on their desk that they're working on, um, we, I think we want to figure out a way to achieve those goals for our students. That's the other concern. And just for me personally, I, um, you know, we didn't have access to the lease until today, so. Yeah, so I was not really able to review that ahead of today.
Yeah, we apologize for that. We didn't get it back from, from Eric and Smith two eleven through the next one. So it's been a long process.
Ms. Muse?
So to respond to the Fortune 500 company comment, Dr. Miller. Where's the proof? That just means that there's, everybody has at least one Apple device, whether it be an iPhone or an iPad. But that doesn't mean that Fortune 500 companies, all day, every day, every person that works in that building is working on an Apple device. That just means everybody has some sort of Apple device.
I, I agree with that.
Because it's right here in this article.
And I was going to say, um, to the chair, I don't want us to get away from thinking that any of these are any more than a tool for instruction. The best thing, the classroom is a great teacher, and we're giving them the resources and the tools they need to instruct. We're not putting this in the hands of students to replace our teacher. That is critical for us to understand, just like in a math class, we're going to need a calculator, but in an English class, we're going to need a different tool. So I totally agree with the conversation we're hearing, different CTE courses, drafting, we, we will need different tools, and we certainly want to provide that for our students. So whatever tools they need to be successful, whether it is a mouse, whether it is a keyboard to go with their iPads, the, the issue becomes what we can provide them within the budget that we're restricted to and being able to repair and replenish those so that no student goes without, um, devices. So it is constantly a challenge, and we just move in that direction. It's, it's hard to have one group doing one thing and being an expert on that and another group. So I totally agree, we need to ensure that whatever device or tool that is going to be, we provide that, whether it be a laptop, whether it be a calculator, whether it be a tractor or whatever they need to be successful in, to be sure we're providing that for all our students.
And, and as the board knows, we were providing, um, equipment in the form of computers for school resource officers when, when that's necessary because we are able to purchase those at our educational rate. And so I just think we need to ensure that we're doing the same thing to the extent we need to with, with regard to our students. Okay, so Ms. Muse?
Since we didn't have these documents to review because they got here so late last night, I think we need to table this for right now and have a little more discussion on it before we, so I make a motion that we table it for right now and possibly come back to it in January.
I understand commissioners wanted to talk about this on Monday night, this morning.
Yeah, I mean, part of the lease process is the board commissioners have to approve the resolution because they're the funding body for this. So they have to approve a resolution to say they're going to commit the funds for us to use, and that was planned for Monday, so that would have to be delayed.
Can't help that, we didn't get the paperwork until midnight last night, and then we had to all be here today.
Just a viewer of that.
I mean, this is, this is money that is coming out of next year's budget, correct?
Correct.
So it's next year's capital budget, so there's no huge time constraint that requires this to happen, unless-
The ordering of it, making sure that equipment is here in time.
I don't think 30 days is going to kill us.
I feel like that'll, that'll, that'll be fine. I want the board to feel comfortable with what you're doing.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second? All right, any further discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Hart?
I agree with Mrs. Muse about, obviously because I second the motion, but Mrs. Muse has been raising concerns about us using iPads for at least four years, and we've not done much, much about it. I'm an advocate of technology, uh, but I think that clearly we can have other devices than Apple. So my vote, if we voted today, would be no.
Okay, with that, any further discussion? If not, then signify yes with the raising of your right hand. Motion to table, yes. All right, we'll table until January. Thank you. All right, well, we'll move to public input, and I will ask Ms. Kitzinger if there are any citizens requesting to address the board.
We have, yep, we have two. The first one is Susan Cook.
Okay, as we begin our public input.
Somebody's glasses are on the floor.
Okay, somebody's glasses have dropped there. As we begin our public input today, we want to thank you all for coming out to speak to the Board of Education. Speakers will address the board from the speaker's podium at the front of the room and begin your remarks by stating your name and address. Speakers are expected to be civil in their language and presentation. Public comment is not intended to require the board to answer any impromptu questions. However, the board, in accordance with policy, will include a discussion of public input on the agenda later today, at which time the board may discuss issues raised in the public comment portion of the meeting. The board is here to listen to those who have signed up, and our speakers will be called upon one at a time, and we'll have up to five minutes for speaking. If you're still speaking when the alarm sounds, please take your seat. The decorum for our public meeting is to be polite and civil and respectful. I ask that your comments to the board be focused, polite, do not include any personal attacks or name-calling, and be directed toward the board. Thank you for your cooperation. You may begin.
Okay, my name is Susan Jackson Cook. I live at 1230 Bryce's Creek Road in New Bern. And first, I just compliment the board. This meeting, this makes me so aware of the complexities of the issues you have to deal with, you have to decide how we expend our money for the best results for our students and our citizens. So I'm here this morning to express my personal concern that some community groups are attempting to stifle the education of our children and youth rather than to nourish. I want to read from the Craven, Craven County Board of Education Policies and Administrative Requirements, Policy Code 3000, Goals and Objectives of the Education Program. And I've selected some. It is a goal of the Craven County Board of Education that every student be provided the opportunity to receive a sound, basic education, to graduate from high school prepared for one, work, two, further education, and three, citizenship. Goal number two, specifically develop sufficient knowledge of geography, history, and basic economic and political systems to make informed choices with regard to issues that potentially affect the student personally or affect the student's community, state, and nation. Point five, develop the capacity to examine and solve problems. Point six, foster respect and appreciation for cultural and ideological diversity and differences. And I think that your discussion and thoughts tonight have shown how, as responsible citizens and achieving citizens, you have to be able to listen carefully to opposing viewpoints, different possible solutions for issues, the facts behind issues, and then make informed judgments based on your own values, your religious, religious or ethical beliefs. However, as you've spoken tonight, you have pointed out that these are not, your decisions are not strictly based on facts. You have said, "I think," or "we need to figure out." You have to weigh all of this complex information, factual and ideological, as you consider what is best for our students. So one of the, one of the statements of our purpose of our educational system is goods, to provide good citizens. Good citizenship requires this ability that you have exhibited here tonight. And this is called critical thinking. So I implore the board, as you consider all of the requests and points of view and opinions that come from different community members, that you take no actions that would stifle the development of this capacity, the capacity that's called critical thinking these days, that's sorely needed in any democratic form of government such as ours. So we need to be sure that our education system continues to provide students the ability as future citizens to grapple with different issues rather than just push them under the table and pretend they are, they don't exist. And again, thank you for letting me express my own personal opinion, nobody's opinion but mine. And just accept my appreciation. I think all citizens would profit from coming to a work session like this and really hearing the amount of time and concern that you all devote to this calling that you have to foster education.
Thank you.
Perfect timing.
Thank you, yes, ma'am.
Next, we have Lori Spees.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for giving us some time to talk this morning. I wanted to talk about the Master Teachers Program, not the program itself, but I was looking at the presentation before the meeting today. And I just, it's good that we're making some strides, but I would ask the question that we still have 20% of those 12 slots, I guess that are not filled. And I wondered if, looking at the presentation, it said four had come from, moved from other sites, and then four had moved within their buildings. Is that just a movement of eight teachers that were already in our system? I'm not rhetorically asking that. I think it's a question, a good question for the board to ask. We, as Ms. Clark pointed out earlier, it's, it's a point that I stick on a lot, but we have a lot of teacher vacancies still. As of last month, because I, the HR report wasn't out there for this meeting, but we still had 54 full-time classroom teacher or licensed teacher positions that were open last month, and we're in December. And it's a big improvement since August, when we were starting the school, when we had over 80 full-time licensed teacher positions that were open. But 54 is still a lot, and so I'm concerned if we're putting a lot of emphasis on eight to 12 teachers, but we're just moving them around inside the system, I'm a little concerned about that. And so I just would ask or challenge the board to, to stay on top of what are we doing to recruit teachers? To those low-performing schools, to all of our schools, what are we doing to recruit teachers and to retain them? I don't, I'm not sure that really the turnover or the attrition is really the problem, but what are we doing to get them here? And then I just, after sitting in this, this session this morning, I just listened to the, the digital technology stuff is always of interest to me. I think most of you know me to know that I'm always coming from the workforce standpoint. And so Apple products are awesome, they're fun, but the reality is that they still are not tablets. I don't care what brand they are. Tablets are still not the main mode that people use in the workforce. We, we've got to get our kids able to type correspondence still. They still have to compose emails, which I know we can do from mobile devices, but they have to be able to write letters, and they have to be able to write things pertaining to content. They have to be able to do complex analytical stuff. You cannot do that beyond a very elementary level on a tablet. And I say that from my own personal work experience, and I say that from a workforce standpoint. So I just hope that we will consider that as we continue to throw tablets into the hands of kids, that we've got to get them some practical workforce skills as well. And I do always want to thank this board because I think you're very supportive of the CTE component of our curriculum and our school system, and I really appreciate that. Maybe this time next year, I'll be up here rallying for a forestry certification course, which has been approved by DPI in the last month, and it should be available for our curriculum starting in 2024. So, thank you all.
Thank you. All right, we have a little time before lunch, so are we okay? I'm just going to try and get minutes approved. We'll move on to item O. And I will entertain a motion to approve our regular meeting minutes from November 16th work session and November 16th meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor, signify by the raising of your right hand. All right, thank you for that. And then closed session meeting minutes for November 16th, 2023, and also November 20th, 2023 panel hearing minutes.
So moved.
Second. Everybody's excited. Okay, all in favor, signify by the raising of your right hand. Thank you for that. Moving right along, so we have a few minutes. We'll go ahead to item P on the consent agenda. These are policies for first read, I mean, second read on the consent agenda. And I think everything else that we, yeah, so that's, you can do those as a block. I will entertain a motion to approve those policies.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, ma'am. For substitute teachers that is listed under consent agenda.
Oh, yes, that's right.
Supposed to consult with Mr. Gatcher.
That's right. Okay, so we can.
No, no.
No.
Not on these. This is our second read.
Oh, no, it is there.
Hold on, let's look.
Well, it was also on our first read.
It was.
Oh, no, she's right, it's down there.
It was a legal reference update?
Yeah, it's not the other.
It is the same. It is the same policy. How about if we just pull that out of the consent agenda? That's all right, and we'll hold on to that for a later time. I think everything else with that change. The board will signify their vote to approve those policies by the raising of your right hand. I appreciate it, all right? I think that passes. And with that, let's go ahead and, and break, I think.
Do you want to wait? I mean, all we've got left to do is discuss the public input, and then we will go into closed session anyway.
Okay, all right. Okay.
And then we do closed session before lunch.
All right, let's do it. You have discuss, who has discussion, public input? Ms. Muse.
I appreciate the feedback that we got from. It was nice to hear that we're doing some good things and that it's recognized that we really do sit up here and think about stuff. We don't always get that, so that was, that was very nice. We all know I love CTE. I love everything about it. When I was the program assistant here and in Linnor County, I'm sorry, I absolutely view CTE teachers and students as the cool kids in school. Because you learn a lot and you get to do all that cool, hands-on stuff. I appreciate what was said about the iPads. And as, as the board member who currently has a full-time job and is actively engaged with the workforce, there's so many people coming to work, they don't know how to do pivot tables, they don't know how to do formulations in Excel, they don't know how to do a PowerPoint, they don't know how to do a lot of things. And the reason, and all of those can be used in an English language arts class, a math class, a geometry class. All of those can be used in a student's day-to-day work. So as a board member who is actively engaged in the workforce every single day, and I'm seeing new hires all the time that are not successful in their job, it's because we're not teaching them this stuff in school, because they can't do it on an iPad. So I see it every single day. So they don't stick around long, which drives your turnover rate through the roof. And then the staff that stay, they're overwhelmed, overworked, and underpaid because you can't fill vacancies, and when you do keep, when you do fill them, they're not staying because they can't do the work. That's all I've got.
Okay, Mr. Ippok?
I certainly appreciate Dr. Cook and Mrs. Spees coming and speaking to us. I'm always concerned where I hear numbers of previous periods and want to make sure I'm clear on the number of vacancies we have standing right now for the record.
It changes by the hour.
That's good news, as long as it's going down, right?
So I have 168 fully classified.
168, and that concludes classified.
Or 104.
And our report we received today was 62 licensed, but this was from Friday, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, just want to, I guess, echo, thank you, Ms. Cook, for your words. And again, about the iPads and the tablets, I'm not a huge fan, and a comment that was made earlier, our students can't go a day without their iPads. I think that's really sad, that, that, that is our, the main way that they're, they're learning. And I understand that's the way that it is, but it's a really, really, really sad reality if they can't go a day without their tablets. And I would also like to make mention of the mandated upcoming classes for computer science. I don't think that that's going to be a tablet science class, you know? I just think that that's important to point out and ponder on.
Thank you, Dr. Cook, for continuing to remind folk that integrity is paramount to our students becoming fruitful and successful citizens. In old days, instead of calling it critical thinking, we would call it the Socratic method. But I think they're, they're interwoven with regard to Mrs. Spears. It's important that we continue to search for the best teachers available. Master teachers are wonderful, but again, as we have a continuous improvement system, we can do better, and we must do better. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else? Okay, well, I just want to thank members of the public for their input. I think it's, it's always valuable for us to hear from you and I think the members of this board certainly agree that we, we want all the best teachers we can get in this district and that's of utmost importance to us. So, with that, I will entertain a motion to enter into closed session here while we have lunch, to do two things, to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, or condition of appointment of a public officer or employee, or prospective public officer or employee under North Carolina General Statute, Section 143-318 Point 11A6, and to consult with an attorney in order to protect the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which is privilege, which privilege is hereby acknowledged under North Carolina General Statute, Section 143-318 Point 11A3.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, signify by the raising of your right hand. All right. I think we got it. Thank you. And we will adjourn.
All right, we're back in open session. The board met in closed session. Parents agreed to release all claims against the district that could have been brought pursuant to IDEA and North Carolina special education statutes through June 30, 2025 in exchange for non-monetary terms and payment of up to $124,700,000.
All right, we're back in open session. The board met in closed session. Parents agreed to release all claims against the district that could have been brought pursuant to IDEA and North Carolina Special Education statutes through June 30th, 2025 in exchange for non-monetary terms and payment of up to $124,750 in the threatened litigation matter JR by and through JR and BR versus Craven County Board of Education. So with that, we need to finish up a few items from earlier in the meeting, and we've got Dr. Boone back with us. So the HR report is before the board, and we'll have a roll call vote, Dr. Miller on that.
Voting on the HR report, Ms. Jennifer Dacey?
Yes.
Ms. Lauren Pitzinger?
Yes.
Ms. Naomi Clark?
No.
Mr. Carr Hi-Hop?
Yes.
Mr. Greg Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Scott Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Mews?
Yes.
All right. All right, thank you, Dr. Miller. And I think then we just have one item remaining from the consent agenda relating to board policy on substitutes, 7430. So I would entertain a motion to approve said policy.
So move.
Second. But do you want a roll call vote on that?
No, ma'am. I've decided to be a coodoo.
Okay. All right. All right. No further discussion, I presume?
We're good.
All right. All in favor signify by raising your right hand. Thank you for that. That passes. And then we just have our meeting evaluation. If you will facilitate that, Dr. Miller.
All right. Thinking about meeting your objectives at the board and the goals for today, what pluses do we have before proceeding to what continues?
I think Jennifer did really, or Ms. Stacy did really well running her first meeting. Sorry, Ms. Stacy. I'm all on first names today, calling people out their names. That's all right. Ms. Mews?
Well, I really enjoyed public input today. And I really appreciate the flexibility of staff when they got to call off guard to discuss policies when they're not probably necessarily prepared to do that. And I'd like to thank Ms. Clark because she's been a little spicy today, and I enjoy that when she's a little spicy, and so it helps make our meetings a little fun and entertaining. So I just appreciate you, Ms. Clark, because you've been a little spicy today.
Anybody else? There's a lot of really good dialogue. Dialogue. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Clark?
Sorry, I appreciate the flowers given to me by Mrs. Mews. Believe, no, 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 no. Even though we disagree, we really did a lot today, and that makes it flow very smoothly. So thank you.
Other pluses?
Well, I would just agree with Ms. Mews with regard to staff sort of rolling with the punches. I think we did a lot of good in talking through those policies and giving the public and maybe staff sort of foreshadowing of the different issues that administration has to wrestle with as we implement statutory changes. And, you know, there are times that we agree with what the legislature does, and there are times when we don't, and we have to call them out when we don't. And I'm not afraid to do that. I'll point out one right now because we had some language in their budget bill. You know, they've got all of these requirements in the Parents' Bill of Rights about us making very clear what the options are for all kinds of things, and with regard to immunizations and those sorts of things that are required for our schools, we're very clear about religious exemptions and that kind of thing. But in regard to that, the legislature really, really goofed and really messed up in regard to our nursing students at our community colleges, and they need to figure it out and fix it. They didn't, and they have been kind of playing hide the ball, and they're getting sued at community colleges for doing that, so.
But let me say, all community colleges are doing it. And because, I'll just say it, our community college is doing it, which is forcing my daughter to consider taking her nursing enrollment elsewhere.
Well, I think it's a process thing. They're hiding the ball. They're saying, yes, you can have a religious exemption, but they're not being upfront about how to actually get it. So, you know, I've had some students say to me, well, it's like, you know, we have this nursing shortage, but they're trying to end my career before it's even started by making it really difficult to get into this. Makes no sense. So we have to call the legislature out when they don't do things right. But thank you for staff for being flexible today.
Other pluses? An effort can always improve. It would even be better next time, if. How can it improve? We can have all of our presentations before we even come right forward.
Ms. Clark? Anything to add?
Yes, ma'am. All of us have access to the presentation via the computer, but the public doesn't have that. So when we put up there, and it's black, it's very difficult, very difficult to see. So, and I know you put a lot of work into it. It wasn't black to y'all? I don't know if that was my eyes.
You changed it. They changed the view. It was the view.
It was the view. It wasn't our presentation. But I agree, I was going to mention that as well.
Yeah, thank you.
I think it was hard to see.
Anything else?
I was really cold today.
You were cold?
Yes.
Okay. It was cold.
Any recommendations for that?
Yes, ma'am.
We often do at staff meetings, you put a sticky up there if you're cold, and the second person that gets cold, you change it. And then that way you know it's not the shoe. And then when somebody gets hot, you put a sticky.
I was sweating. Sorry. I need to wear some more clothes.
That's the issue. We're trying to regulate that. Two people, that's kind of what we do as a team. The second person, then it's an issue, and then you adjust that. Or you can give me the, like, adjust it, and I'll get up there.
I didn't want to just sit here with my jacket on. I thought that might be weird.
It's always good when you have deltas to kind of have owners of that, so that if we just said we wanted to be better and everybody takes ownership. So in the future, if you just let me know in some way, I'll adjust it.
You just text Dr. Miller. You're responsible. You're cold.
Here, just.
She is not a good representation of hot and cold. She's always cold.
I am always cold in here. I wore long sleeves.
You know the deltas, how can it be even better? What can staff do, or what can you do to help your teams be more efficient and effective?
Any other ideas?
If I have any.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, with that, I think, I think that is, that concludes the agenda. So I will entertain a motion.
So move.
So move. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor signify by the raising of your right hand. We stand adjourned. Thank you.